I would like to call to order the April 12, 2022 special meeting of the Hillsborough Planning Commission. Mr. Cooper, would you please call the roll?
Yes, President Bennett.
Ah, here, I'm sorry.
Vice President Cavoli is excused. Commissioner Air.
Here.
Commissioner Grillo. Commissioner Grillo, you're present. Your mic working?
A moment ago, he was kind of in the Mickey Mouse range of of audio, so.
Am I here now?
Ah, excellent.
Here we go.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Grillo. And Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner Thrall Nash. Commissioner Uzmani.
Here.
President Bennett, you're muted.
Thank you. So, thank you, sir. We have a core and present, so we'll proceed with our agenda tonight. The planning commission is placing emphasis on effectively addressing the issues in which we are engaged in a respectful and timely manner. We ask all parties to hearings and administrative matters during our meeting to assist us with this emphasis by participating in a direct and relevant testimony and comments. As you can all see, we have a relatively short agenda tonight. This is a special meeting for purposes of the holding public hearings on the Housing Hillsborough agenda. As a result, I'm going to pass by the communications on non-agenda items, the approval of minutes and the consent agenda. I guess I will, to the extent that there's anyone here who wishes to address the commission on non-agenda items. I guess we should allow that. Don, do we know if anyone is here for for that purpose tonight?
Anyone wishes to testify this evening on a non-agenda item, please use the raise hand function located on the bottom right of your screen on the Zoom toolbar. If you are joining by phone, please use star nine on your telephone keypad. And this is to provide testimony on a non-agenda item. Going to scroll. I do see one hand. I'm trying to determine who that is. Nope, the hand has been lowered, so seeing none.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. We have two hearings tonight. They're both administrative hearings. So we don't have to worry about the ex-party contacts issues. Does anyone wish to declare a conflict of interest with regard to either one of these agenda items? Seeing none. First agenda item is Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan Amendment number 002-22, Housing Hillsborough. The applicant is the city of Hillsborough. The request is for us to consider approving an order recommending the city council approve amendments to the Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan in order to integrate middle housing terminology, residential densities, and procedural requirements consistent with state law. Order number 8368 is available. Does staff have any updates or additional information they wish to submit at this time? If not, Mr. Berry, why don't you proceed with your staff report?
Thank you, President Bennett. Chris Berry, Development Services Manager and the Development Services Section of the Planning Division, here presenting on behalf of staff this Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Just to point out, there are two hearings tonight. So this first one on the Comprehensive Plan Amendment is going to be a somewhat abbreviated presentation relative to the Community Development Code Amendment. So I suspect that more of the interest is in the Community Development Code Amendments, and that is where there's a much more in-depth staff presentation, and that is the Community Development Code is the application in which we received public testimony. So again, this is an abbreviated presentation relative to the the other one. So it's going to be somewhat quick, but this is minor in nature compared to the Community Development Code Amendments. Right? So, next slide, please. So the agenda for the Comprehensive Plan Amendments, just going to highlight the overall premise of these amendments, then touch on the public testimony approval criteria, and then finally the staff recommendation. Next slide, please. So the amendments being made to the Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan are updating of housing terms, adding middle housing as a category of housing types, reflect the renamed zoning districts that are also being amended in the Community Development Code, updating references to residential density to be consistent with state rules, and updating procedural requirements in certain community plan areas to be consistent with the state requirements for clear and objective procedures for housing. Next slide, please. So no public testimony was received on the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Again, the testimony that we did receive was specific to the Community Development Code Amendment, so we'll touch on that when we get into the other public hearing. Next slide, please. So the approval criteria in which staff has written findings and is in draft form for the planning commission's consideration address these two approval criteria and that the proposed text amendments to the Conference Plan are necessary to reflect changing community conditions, needs, and desires to fulfill regional obligations or to address changes in state law. So that final part of that sentence is important. To address changes in state law is the primary purpose of the Housing Hillsborough Project. And then number two, the proposed text supports the goals and policies of the Comprehensive Plan, which staff finds these amendments do. Next slide, please. So staff's recommendation on the Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan Amendment is that our findings related to the compliance with the approval criteria, we are recommending adoption of the minor amendments to the Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan. Next slide. And we are available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Do any planning commission members have questions for staff regarding the Plan Amendment hearing? Seeing none. Don, has anyone pre-registered to testify in the Comprehensive Plan Amendment application? If so, we'll set the time limit for each speaker at four minutes.
We have several people registered this evening. However, it was not specified as to whether they were registering for the HCP or the CDCA. So I can call upon those people quickly to ask them whether they are here to testify on the HCP. And we'll just run through the.
Why don't you go ahead and do that, then?
Mr. Knutson, can you please state whether you are testifying on the HCP or the CDCA?
I mainly CDCA, but I guess my main my main question on this one, I would ask one question on this, one or two.
Okay, one second, please. I'm going to set our timer so that we can get your testimony official here, and one moment, please. Sorry, this is the first time we're doing this. Appreciate your patience.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
And President Bennett, did you want to? You have, Mr. Knutson, you have four minutes to testify. I'll start the clock now.
Okay.
Thanks, Don.
Can I just, I want to ask Chris, on this portion of the hearing tonight, on this action, what in a nutshell is this due, and is there any financial constraints that this is gonna cause anybody in the city particularly?
Mr. Knutson, the staff will will answer questions after all of the testimony has been received, so he'll keep track of whatever questions you may have and answer them when appropriate.
Okay, I just wanted a little more clarity on what what the bottom line on passing this tonight is. I I heard what he said about the adoptions and the need to update it, but I I just wanted a little more from staff on that. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, then we had Paul and Dorothy Crandall. I'm going to just call upon them and just ask if you could please just state whether you are testifying on the HCP or the CDCA. Then we can just get a list of those folks. Mrs. Crandall, is that you there as Dorothy? You could let us know whether you're here to testify on the HCP or the CDCA.
Don, is there a way we can use the the raising function so we don't have to go through everybody on the list?
Absolutely. So we'll just say that whoever wants to testify in favor of the HCP would raise their hand. I don't see any hands raised. Anyone wanting to testify in opposition? There is. I'm seeing two hands raised. So we have Mo Shadadi, and I apologize for butchering your name there. I'm going to set the timer.
Yes. My concern is I'm not against the proposition, but however, I just want to make sure that they're not going to come and take my property and, you know, divide it into subdivisions and housing and and smaller condominiums or townhouses. More like a affirmative action where, you know, they would just come and take my property. I just want to make sure that's not part of the deal.
And President President Bennett, perhaps just affirming to Mr. Shadadi, and I apologize. Yeah, I apologize. Thank you, sir, for your your grace. We will answer that question at the end of the testimony, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And for anyone who's listening in, you probably heard my comment earlier when Mr. Knutson asked a question of staff. What we will do is if you if you wish to testify for neutrally or against the applications that are being heard by the planning commission tonight, feel free to do that. Ask questions as you as you feel necessary to to look into what we're what the subjects of our hearing tonight, and at the end of the the testimony, whatever questions have been posed, will be answered by staff or by the planning commission.
Thank you.
Don, anyone else with their hand up with regard to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment?
Yes, we have Raja Manam, I believe. He was pre-registered.
Hello.
Hello, you have four minutes.
Hey, I just want to ask a quick question. I did talk to the staff in the past about this, but I'm not 100% satisfied with the answer. So I just want to ask again. In the case where you have a single-family house with a with a big lot and there's existing single-family house there, but they have a big enough lot to have a duplex, let's say. I believe the code is asking to subdivide the lot. I'm just requesting or asking. There is really no benefit in subdividing the lot, that adds cost and time. Why can't we just have a duplex built on the same lot without doing subdivision along with a single-family lot? Or why can't single-family lot be added to the same density? What are the rules for, and then just build without subdividing? I am requesting to consider that that change. Thank you. Please let me know if the question is not clear.
Chris, do you understand the question?
Yes, President Bennett.
Thank you very much.
And point of order, Commissioner Bennett, I know it's difficult for members of the public when they arrive and we have a Comprehensive Plan Amendment. I could either state, or if you wanted to state, there are two distinct differences here, and these first few questions have really been more for our Community Development Code Amendments rather than these policy and very high-level nomenclature sort of amendments. I don't know if we want to clarify that again to help our audience.
Sure, I can do that. Because this, what we're looking at tonight is fairly technical, and there are two things that the city is is looking at this evening. In this first hearing, we're looking at modifications to what's called the Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan. That plan has a policy document. It reflects wide-range policy. It does. It doesn't result in any rezoning of property. It doesn't result in any subdivision of property. All it does is describe the policy about various issues related to the use of land in the city of Hillsborough, among of which which are density, the number of homes or dwelling units that may be allowed in certain types of zones in the city. The second hearing, which which will come later this evening, has to do with modifications to the Community Development Code. And those those code amendments actually implement the policy that will be reflected in the Comprehensive Plan. And they're much more comprehensive than the minor modifications that we're looking at to the Comprehensive Plan itself. For those of you who are not familiar with planning, I'll try to use a corollary and City Attorney Kreen, if I'm really kind of going off the off the road here, you can pull me back if you feel necessary. But if you compare something that you're probably familiar with, which is the Constitution, with statutes or laws which are are passed by either Congress or the state legislature. That's a diff that's a similar comparison to the Comprehensive Plan and the and the Community Development Code. The Constitution sets broad policy and laws that are passed by Congress and the legislature partly implement that policy and 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 create a much higher level of detail that can be included in the Constitution or the Conference Plan. I would invite staff to do a much better job than I just did of trying to 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 kind of fly at 30,000 feet about what we're trying to do with these two hearings tonight.
I think Commissioner Bennett, you've done a good job. I just wanted to help those of you who are listening. Just to introduce myself for the record, I'm Colin Cooper, the Planning Director. And, you know, one of the several staff members that'll be here helping with the hearing this evening. And so hopefully people understand that this is a fairly high level. So those first two questions, which were good questions, are really directed more to our second hearing tonight rather than the policy issues that Chris just outlined, which really relate to just some nomenclature changes in the Comprehensive Plan, because the policies are actually already in place that were adopted by our city council that actually support the increase in middle housing that was anticipated in the 2018, even prior to the legislation. And so we have that type of housing policy. So we're not really making major changes. We're just making nomenclature changes in this action. Thank you, President Bennett and Commission and members of the audience.
All right. Well, Don, why don't we move ahead with testimony? Is there anyone else who is with us tonight who is interested in either asking questions about or testifying in favor of neutral to or opposed to the proposed modifications to the Comprehensive Plan?
Yeah, currently Justin Laechi is has his hand raised. I will unmute him right now.
Can you spell that last name for us?
L A C H E.
Thank you. Can someone let him know that he's muted?
Sorry, Mr. Chair and team, thank you very much for handling this question in real time. And this question is a neutral testimony question, germane both to this first process as well as the second for the amplification, which is at the end of the meeting or the meeting minutes, could the city staff clarify for those of the community in the future, if they ever wanted to either appeal or amend the state decision, some of us are confused about, is this something that would have to go back to the legislature? Or the governor, meaning some of us are a little confused as to what is the city's final jurisdiction, metro's final jurisdiction and the implementation of the legislature's decision versus if there had to be larger changes, if it would be through the state legislature or the governor. I'm not asking for a line-by-line interpretation, but I think that might help some of the members of the community to understand which of these meetings is even germane to their particular questions, and that's why this question's neutral. Sir, thank you very much for fielding my question.
Thank you, Mr. Laechi, for your question. It's a good question, and either our city attorney, Chris Kreen, can answer that, or Mr. Cooper, or Mr. Berry can answer that for you.
I don't know. I start, and if I get something wrong here, Chris Kreen, our city attorney, can clean this up. It's a very understandable question that was just asked, of course, by the community. My understanding is that the Oregon State Legislature passed by both houses and passed a law. Governor signed it, so it's a state law that was turned into, was codified into Oregon Revised Statute. So it's at that level. The the law was clearer in general, but then it goes into rulemaking for one year, which was Oregon Administrative Rule, which also has the has the impact of being a state law. And that additional OAR and the ORS were very clear about the requirements for metro area and the local cities within Oregon at different population levels, different portions of the law applied to it. So the jurisdiction is with the state, and the city is required to implement it. We're required, in fact, to implement it by June 30th, or the state will impose model code on the city. That is what occurs here. So I hope that it's pretty straightforward and probably misses a lot of legal nuance. I'm trying to keep it fairly short. But I hope that helps answer the question, Mr. Laechi. I apologize if I'm getting that incorrect, and for other members of the audience that are here that we're definitely the city, like cities across the state of Oregon, are currently doing the same thing, or have already, a few state cities have already passed their House Bill 2001 state-mandated element. The Housing Hillsborough, to go a little bit further, includes quite a number of other state pieces of legislation. They're all addressed, mostly addressed at some form of housing or or not. So it's been quite an active legislative process in the last few years. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Mr. Kreen, do you have anything to add to that?
I believe if I understood the question correctly, it it gets at the question of is there anything in these code amendments that goes beyond state law that would be, could be appealed, for example, to Luba as going beyond what those legislation requires? Versus if somebody objects to a provision in these code amendments, do they have to go get the state law changed? And Mr. Berry can identify these as he goes through the the CDCA amendments, but it's my understanding that, for the most part, everything in these changes is intended to reflect either the provisions of House Bill 2001 or Senate Bill 458 or the other pieces of state legislation, or the rules that implement those that go into even greater detail. There may be a few things in these amendments that are were created exclusively by the city that go beyond what state law requires. But my guess is it's not very much. So in direct response to the question, most of the provisions here would work if if somebody were objected to them, would require a change to state law, either in the statutes or the administrative rules. There's very little left for local discretion after taking those two bodies of law into account. But if there are specific provisions people have concerns about, they should identify them in their testimony, and we can determine at that point whether it's something the city came up with. Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Laechi? Maybe he's not with us any longer.
Sorry, team. Thank you. I'm the you've been very gracious. Zoom has been coming in and out. I've heard all the testimony correctly, so thank you very much for clarifying clarifying this, and hopefully, again, as a neutral party for this, it might help the testimony understand where to maybe redirect their passions on this topic. Thank you, team, very much.
Well, thank you, too. We appreciate your dialing in tonight and asking questions that may further the general discussion. I appreciate it. Don, anyone else?
Mr. Knutson has his hand raised at this time.
He's already spoken.
Then, let's see, we have AK. So I will unmute you, and if I could ask you to please state your name for the record.
Yeah, my name is Abhishek Karmik. I'm sorry, I just joined, but I wanted to know if this meeting recording, I'm seeing it's being recorded, will be shared somewhere so I can get up to speed on the discussion that I missed.
Yes, the all of the planning commission meetings are recorded, so to the extent that you need to go back and listen to anything, recordings are available. Mr. Knutson, I know that you didn't use very much of your time. We'd certainly be more than happy to give you three minutes to finish up your comments on the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, should you wish to do that.
Yes, so, yeah, thanks, Jeff. So I just want to revisit what Chris just said. Because I think it's an important question that Mr. Laechi asked.
Chris Kreen, you're talking about?
Yeah, so City Attorney Chris Kreen, he answered without completely answering what he, I think what I heard him say was if there's something in this particular action or the one that's going to follow that is a city nuanced, unique action outside of the SB 2001 or the 458 or the various rules that we've been working with here, the mandates of the state. I think I heard him say those may be appealable, but I but he didn't really say it. So I think Hillsborough has some Hillsborough crafted takes on some of this that we'll talk about next, but I'd like him to make a more definitive statement on the record, just so I know if he's saying somebody might be able to appeal something that Hillsborough inserted, but it would have to be something that wasn't under the model code that the states provided. I just don't want any confusion on that. I don't know, you know, that would be a problem, but I just thought we, from a procedural standpoint, I think. know, you know, that would be a problem, but I just thought we, from a procedural standpoint, I think that's important to know. So that's the only follow up I had. Thank you, Jeff.
Oh, you're welcome, Mr. Knudsen. City Attorney Kreen, can you all respond to that?
Yes, thank you. I'm not sure what more I can say. The reality is, is every governmental decision, every governmental action anywhere, anytime can be challenged in the courts, period. So there is nothing that we can do to, that can't be appealed. The question is, what are your chances, right? So if somebody, if somebody wanted to appeal the CDCA amendments on the theory that one of them, one or more of the provisions were not consistent with state law and it's specifically required by either the OARS or the ORSs, it's a loser, right? You're not going to prevail on that. If you want to prevail on that point, you have to get the state law changed. And I think that was the focus of the question. How much of this, if we object to it, would require a state, a change to state law? And that is, and the answer to that is most of it. There are maybe a few provisions that are not specifically required by state law that could be challenged on other bases. But the reality is that anything the city does can be challenged. And there's just no question about that. But your chances of actually prevailing are minimal if what you're doing is effectively challenging the state statute. If you really are serious about changing one or more of those provisions that are required by state law, then you're better off spending your time in Salem than then arguing with the Hillsborough Planning Commission.
All right, Don, do we have anyone else who wants to testify with regard to the comprehensive plan amendment hearing?
Yes, we have Chong No, who I will allow to talk at this time. And if you could please state your name for the record and whether you're testifying in favor or in opposition or neutral. And I would like to remind everybody to please email your address to the planning email address that's on the agenda so we may capture you in the record. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and start your four minutes testimony.
And this is President Bennett. Would you, when you state your name, would you also spell it for the record, please?
My name is Chong C S U N G, last name N G O. I would like to ask regarding the adoption amendment. So do we have any clear plan? What area that we actually plan to any, any area, any location that we plan to develop this community development? And if we have a clear plan where we actually own the, adopt the property, so what the next step for the resident of those location? Thank you.
Mr. Barry, you have those questions that you can address later on, correct?
Correct, President Bennett.
Thank you, sir. Don, anyone else wish to testify with regard to the comprehensive plan amendment?
It appears that we have no further hands raised at this time.
Okay. Is, other than those, because I think we've kind of conflated, pre-registered with people who are present, I just want to make sure. Is there anyone else who's present with us tonight? Who would like to testify with regard to case file CPA 002-22, the comprehensive plan amendment for Hillsborough Housing? And if, if so, this is the time to do that.
So Dorothy has her hand raised. I'm going to go ahead and unmute her after I reset my clock.
Is that Dorothy Crandall?
Dorothy, if you could please state your name for the record. You have four minutes. So Dorothy has raised her hand on and off several times and we have been unable to get her to unmute.
How's that?
Oh, perfect.
Oh, you can hear me now?
Yeah, you know.
Oh, good. Okay, yeah, it's been frustrating. A lot of the questions I did have did have, were answered, the few people that were discussing some changes here. Mine mainly was more residential and I was focused by the letter and trying to go through all these statutes. I was wondering how much the changing of the definitions of all these, the state mandated anyway, would affect how eventually the housing would affect, basically would affect how zoning is in all the, I guess, basically what I'm saying is residential, single-family homes. Then it mentioned middle housing, how much the mix of those neighborhoods would affect the single-family homes, because a lot of us do live in older neighborhoods and you know, we're a little concerned about how, you know, how much cluster is there? I've lived here for many, many years and seen a lot of high density. Hillsborough has changed totally in a lot of good ways, but in a lot of other ways, you know, is questionable. And I just want to make sure that, or I'm wondering how much is everything pretty much, it wasn't really described well as far as we could, you know, understand at this point. The descriptions of you know, what that meant for our properties, other people's properties. You know, how much mixing are we looking at here as far as middle family, triplexes, duplexes? How much on our part, if something like that occurred? I participated in a few other housing situations in the neighborhood that I live in. And had the potential of a lot of development, but in areas that were pretty pristine. And I'm wondering if how much, we're kind of fearful that a lot of that may change and this might be might be a usual customary thing that the state and the city have to agree to as far as change in your verbiage. Then it goes down, you know, the pike and everything's okay, but it's just, it's a fear of a lot of the neighbors that I've spoken to have. So maybe you could address that a little or maybe in the, the second part of this meeting, might address it more when your staff might elaborate on some of the Irving planning. And how it, how it does affect detached homes versus larger multi, you know, dwelling buildings.
Ms. Grandle, this is President Bennett. I think your question is a very fair one and I think I do believe that that will be addressed in a fair, fairly substantial level of detail on tonight's second hearing.
Okay, okay. Well, that's, that's all I pretty much needed to say. I was just wondering how much the, the changing from, from the state down to the city level, that that was just procedural and wouldn't change everything, the zoning so much. The level of zoning was my basic concern, how much zoning would be changed, you know? So, anyway.
Well, I, I'm sure the staff will address that.
All right, thank you.
And you'll have an opportunity to testify in the second hearing as well. So if after their staff report for the second hearing, you continue to have questions, you can testify with regard to the changes to the Community Development Code as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for testifying tonight. Don, anyone else?
Well, and I wanted to say for the record, Dorothy, is this Dorothy Crandall?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, you, because you had volume difficulties. We didn't get that. So thank you. We've got you.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so yes, we have, next up, screen name of BP. So you have, if you could state your name for the record and email your address to the planning email address on the agenda. I'll start the timer and you have four minutes.
Yeah, thank you very much. Am I coming through okay?
Yes.
Great. My name is Brad Pace and I just had a question. It was just about the terminology that was being used. I just wasn't sure if this was a, a change in terminology, because I know that I saw that basically the word family was being left out and it was going to single detached dwelling. Was that a change in, in terminology for single-family housing and it will now be called single detached dwellings? Or will that be the name that is used for this middle housing that's being proposed?
Okay, we'll make sure that that question gets answered for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Don, who's next?
All right, so next we have AW. I will unmute you now and if you could please state your name for the record. We'll set the timer for four minutes.
Hi, my name is Anna Wong. I have a question. You guys kept mentioning all those questions will be addressed on the second meeting. I don't have the second meeting information. Is that just this one after, like, is it the next hour or is it a different Zoom meeting?
No, that will be, there's a second hearing that will occur during this meeting this evening. So we have two applications before us, one for changes to the comprehensive plan. And then there will be a second hearing tonight. The subject of which will be changes to what some people know as this Community Development Ordinance or Zoning Ordinance. So they'll both be tonight.
Got it. So with the same Zoom meeting, we just stay on, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Don?
Yes, we have Victoria Cherkasova. I am sorry for butchering your name. If you could please unmute and state your name.
You were very close. It's Victoria Cherkasova. I want to follow up on one of them note. Can staff specify where city went above the requirements of the law? Kind of line by line, what specifically staff recommended more than was required by law? Thank you.
And just so, I want to make sure we're on the same page here so I understand what your question is. Are you asking the staff to distinguish between changes that are required by statute and changes that we're going to make that are not required by the statute?
Jeff, yes, you're correct. I think Chris mentioned something regarding that there is requirements of statute, but city also implementing something above. So I would like to know what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next, Don?
Okay. Next, we have AK, but I believe that that person has already testified. I'm going to just ask you to unmute and state their name. AK, is this?
This is obviously starting once again. So I was trying to look for the resources. I don't see a chat window. So can you tell me the exact number for this? For the CP, you mentioned some CPA number. Like, I want to read up more on this and I, I would like more links and more information. I don't see it on the chat here. I don't think there's a chat.
The application number for the comprehensive plan amendment at the city is file number 002-22. And it's called Housing Hillsborough.
Housing Hillsborough, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else, Don?
We have no further hands raised at this time.
Okay. Given that there are no further questions or testimony with regard to the plan amendment application. Staff, do you have responses to the questions that were raised? And any further testimony prior to closing the public hearing?
Thank you, President Bennett. This is Chris Perry for the record. So I'm going to run through, even though some of the, the comments and the questions weren't germane to the comprehensive plan amendment. I just, you know, I don't want to leave residents with some of those questions unanswered for a period of time. So I'll just, I'll touch on them quickly and I'll indicate if those are more specific to the CDC, the Community Development Code Amendments, just so there's a tie there. So the first question was financial constraints being imposed through the Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Again, these are nomenclature changes. You know, there, financial constraints is a very broad and vague term, so I, from a staff perspective, don't believe that these amendments are imposing financial constraints. Next question was about the taking of property. By no means through any of these amendments, either the comprehensive plan amendments or the Community Development Code Amendments, is any municipal agency going to come and take anybody's private property? These rule changes do not mandate middle housing. They allow for it if property owners desire to have middle housing on their lot. So this isn't a mandate that every property owner build middle housing on their property. But again, to the point, no, the city of Hillsborough is not going to come and take anybody's property for the sake of middle housing through these rule changes. The question came up about subdivisions being required when building a duplex on a single family lot. That is germane to the Community Development Code Amendments, but that question has been asked of the planning commission and answered that the planning commission is a advisory committee, did not wish to allow middle housing on same property or lot as single detached dwellings. So yes, a subdivision will be required to construct middle housing. Believe that city attorney, Chris Kreen and Colin addressed the procedural questions about appeals. The meeting being recorded. And I think the question also tied in with where this information is available. So the city's Housing Hillsborough website that was, the link to that was provided in all the public notices that have gone out. But is, you know, if you just Google Housing Hillsborough, that's a very simple way to get there. That webpage carries all of the project information, including but not limited to, including all the staff reports for both the comprehensive plan, Community Development Code Amendment and recordings of the most recent virtual community meetings. And when this recording is done, we will provide the recording of this meeting on that same webpage. So it'll be a singular access point for all the information for the community. And that webpage will remain, you know, even beyond this evening. Then what areas will allow middle housing and what are next steps if somebody is wanting to construct middle housing? That will be addressed during the Community Development Code presentation in terms of where middle housing will apply. And I can weave into that presentation, next steps, once the legislation is in place. The impact of middle housing on single-family neighborhoods. That is also more germane to the Community Development Code. So we that into the presentation there. There was a question about the, or clarification on the removal of the word family. That is intentional that the nomenclature in the comprehensive plan as well as the Community Development Code is intentionally removing the word family and that's due to the state legislation that is requiring cities to remove familial, non-familial relationships from the code. So these designations and zones are being clarified to remove the word family and that's intentional. And President Bennett addressed that there is a second hearing this evening. So this is all happening tonight. And then the question on staff specifying where the amendments go beyond state law is more germane to the Community Development Code Amendment. So I'll weave that in. is more germane to the Community Development Code Amendment. So I'll weave that in a broad level to the presentation. With the amount of amendments being made to the Community Development Code. We unfortunately do not have the time this evening to go line by line because that is hundreds of pages of codes. But I will, at a high level, address where staff has gone beyond that state legislation and why we've done that. And I'll see if Colin or Chris or Leslie have anything to add to those responses.
No, Chris, I think you did an outstanding job summarizing the questions and responding. Thanks.
Same, thank you.
Thank you, staff, for your comments. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff at this time before we close the public hearing? I'm not seeing any, so do I have a motion from the commission to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing, Commissioner Shiller.
I have a motion from Commissioner Schiller to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion for Commissioner Schiller, second by Commissioner Grill to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Does anyone abstain? The motion carries. The hearing on the plan amendment application is now closed. And this is the time for Planning Commission deliberations. Who would like to start out?
Well, President Bennett, I'll, this is Commissioner Grillo. I'll just start it out by thanking the staff and attorney Chris Kreen for answering all the questions. I think what we're seeing tonight is the beginning of a lot of questions that people have when you take on a fairly extensive code change of which the plan amendment that we're hearing now is the initial. So I suspect as we go forward that there'll be a lot more questions. I'm not sure we're going to be able to answer them all to people's satisfaction. That's not disrespecting the staff, but again, I want to thank the staff on this. I want to thank people for taking the time to be patient enough to ask their questions, whether they're directly relevant to the first issue, which is the comprehensive plan. Beyond that. I'm going to support the comprehensive plan order as recommended by the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Grillo. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, I'll just weigh in. I'll echo Commissioner Grillo's appreciation to the staff. This has been a long kind of arduous process. The modifications to the to the plan are fairly minimal and I think pretty straightforward. So, and I think they're all consistent with what has been described to us by the staff and the city attorney's office as to what's required by the state statutes. I also want to express appreciation to everyone who came to testify tonight. And it's important for the Planning Commission to hear from members of the community about about the business that's before us. We can't really know what concerns you unless you you take your time and make the effort to come to meetings like this and let us know about your concerns about our neighborhood. So I want to thank everybody who has taken the time to do that. We I for one at least appreciate it very much. I won't speak for anybody else. I too, like Commissioner Grillo, am supportive of these plan amendments. As I said, they're consistent with what we have been told is required by our by our laws, and it's important that the city comply with the statutes that that are adopted by the legislature in Salem, and we do have time limitations within which we need to do that. Because if we don't, then everything that's in the statute and then the administrative rules will be forced upon us by legislative fiat. So, you know, we want to speak for ourselves and do things the Hillsborough way. So with that, I'll conclude my comments. Any other planning commission members wish to make any comments with regard to the comprehensive plan amendments? Hearing none, do we have a final motion on Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan Amendment File zero zero two dash twenty-two Housing Hillsborough?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Air. Is there a second?
A second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Air, second by Commissioner Thrall Nash to approve Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan Amendment Files zero zero two dash twenty-two based upon the staff reports and the testimony that's been heard here tonight. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Anyone who's opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Does anyone abstain? The motion, or the motion is passed unanimously and Conference Conference of Plan Amendment File zero zero two dash twenty-two is hereby approved. The second matter we have before us tonight is to consider approving an order recommending city council approve amendments to the Community Development Code in order to implement a variety of bills passed by the Oregon Legislature. Proposed amendments aim to increase housing choice by removing barriers and encouraging the development of diverse and affordable housing, consistent with city council and comprehensive plan policies. This is reflected in order, proposed order number eight three six nine. Does staff have any updates or additional information they wish to submit at this time?
President Bennett, this is Chris Berry, Development Services Manager of the Planning Division. Just want to note for the record that in addition to the initial staff report, there was a supplemental staff report that was issued just this morning. I just want to make sure that both the Planning Commission and the public were aware of both staff reports.
I know that I received the email earlier today with the supplemental staff report. If you, maybe if plant commissioners did not receive that, you should let us know now. Hearing no one, it sounds like everybody received the supplemental staff report. Mr. Berry, if you'd go ahead and provide our staff report, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bennett. So the presentation on the Community Development Code Amendments is going to be more extensive than the Comprehensive Plan Amendments. There will be three staff members coordinating on this presentation. So with me this evening is Colin Cooper, Planning Director, as well as Senior Planner Leslie Hamilton. Colin is going to indicate the entire project team in one of the slides that's woven into this presentation, just so that the Planning Commission and the public can get a sense of all the work and the resources that have been dedicated to this project. But those will be the three staff members handling the presentation tonight. We also have Kathy Corliss, who is with MIG APG, who is the city's consultant. While Kathy won't be part of the staff presentation, she will be present and available once we get to public testimony and questions to help staff respond to those. Next slide, please, Dawn. So the agenda for the CDC amendments presentation, we'll touch on the project team, schedule, the overview, the community outreach that was done on this project. Next slide. Then we are going to lightly cover the code amendments, understanding that we have a lot of code changes that are being made. One of the things that just came up in the last hearing that we want to make sure is clear is that when we say that this legislation, this is state law change that we are required to implement, just to nuance that a bit. So we could allow, or we could not, we could choose as a city not to implement state legislation, but by default, the model code and other state law would would apply. So to the point, to build off of President Bennett's point, the city through staff in the Planning Division chose to weave a lot of state legislation into this project. Colin will touch on all that state legislation that is woven into the Housing Hillsborough project. We did take a unique approach through the Housing Hillsborough project. A lot of other cities that are subject to the middle housing legislation did decide to only work on the middle housing as a first phase, but they will be following up with future phases on some of the other state legislation. From an efficiency and effectiveness perspective, Planning Division staff at the City of Hillsborough chose to weave in amendments to a variety of state legislation that Colin will touch on. But the code amendments that are associated with that state legislation and where staff has gone beyond, we are just highlighting tonight, there are hundreds of pages of amendments that have been made that have been available to the public since January. So tonight, this presentation is not intended to be an extensive debrief on all those code amendments. We're just going to highlight some some of the high points on those code amendments. And then lastly, we're going to touch on the approval criteria, staff recommendation based on the findings. And last but definitely not least, the response that staff received from the Oregon Department of Land Conservation just this morning. So going to turn the presentation over to Colin. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Chris. President Bennett, members of the Planning Commission and the audience, my name is Colin Cooper, Planning Director for the record. Happy to be here this evening and I'm going to move pretty quickly through these slides because as Chris noted, it's a big presentation and we know we have a lot of people that are seeking to testify or ask questions. And so if I could go to the next slide. So here's our project team and so you can see it's a number of people and I'm going to go through each of them real quickly. Laura Kelly, who's no longer with the City of Hillsborough staff served us very well for a number of years. Laura's involvement with House Bill two thousand and one, two thousand and three and others were very extensive. She served as a project manager administering the code and working on legislative issues. She really set the foundation for a lot of the work that Chris and this team and everybody on this team has taken and has brought to this evening. So wanted to highlight her, even though she's no longer with us. And so when Laura took another opportunity, professional opportunity, Chris Berry and I took over the lead on this. And when I say we, I really almost mean Chris. Chris is a remarkable project manager who's really led a great team here. Bringing this to the finish line and his his eye for detail and his leadership has been outstanding. Leslie Hamilton and Rachel Marble on the Development Services team have been helping with the code work, which has been extensive as we've partnered with our consultants who I'll highlight in a moment. And both of those planners, eye for detail, has also helped us really make this code, I think, really efficient and achieve some of the some of the things that the legislative intent was, which was to remove barriers. Laura Combs is in our long range planning team and Laura worked from the beginning with Laura Kelly and has continued to the end in working on community engagement, working on things like the public survey, our website, working on responses to monitoring our email logs, which have been up for quite some time. And then Lisa Kalif is in the Development Services Team has worked on all the details that are really so critical and important and noticing. And so this is just to start to give the commission so much of the flavor of how much work is here. And Lisa, without her, you know, making sure that we're beating deadlines for Department of Land Conservation Development Planning Notice or or ballot measure fifty-six notice, just making sure that we have mind our Ps and Qs. Nick Baker is also in our long range team and I really recommend people go out and look at the Hills, the Housing Hillsborough project website that Chris mentioned earlier today or this, you know, evening and look at the videos that we have in multiple languages so that our entire community can understand what these code changes will mean for the community going forward with regard to the increasing diversity of housing stock in our community. Our consultants are Kathy Corliss and Kate Rogers from APG, which has recently merged with MIG for a bunch of acronyms. Both of them are just really been outstanding. They've been with us through the code development and now the code writing process. Kathy, in particular, has been a consultant of the City of Hillsborough for many years, knows our code really well. So sorry to take a little bit of time on that, but all these people deserve recognition for their hard work and I think the commission. I wanted the commission to appreciate all the folks that are involved. So thanks for bearing with me on that. Next slide, please. So, and the next slide, please. So we've been at this for a long time. It really began back in the legislative session before this slide and twenty nineteen, as I mentioned, both Laura Kelly and I were very involved in the legislative process, trying to shape a bill that we knew that we were, was not going to be stopped because it was a priority for the Speaker of the House at the time. And so we were involved at that point. From twenty nineteen, it went into rulemaking, which is when you take statute, as I mentioned earlier, and you turn it into Oregon advised rule or rules and they are administrative rules, excuse me. And that took a full year as we were doing, as we were, and we were directly involved in that. At the same time, our work was done with our consultant to evaluate our code, start to evaluate the changes that were going to likely be necessary, depending on the final outcome of the rulemaking. And then we began a public engagement strategy. So that all morphs and I'm not going to go through each one of these points through this, but it just starts to let you know that since twenty twenty, we've been continuously working on this very large package. And since we began working, we were just starting with House Bill two thousand and one, but since then, the Oregon Legislature has added additional legislative bills that we chose, as Chris noted, to the commission and our audience, the to be effective and efficient, we've added those into this large package to address housing in general. So we've continued through a number of public engagement levels, which have included a couple of different public community outreach events. It's included surveys, a website that's been up for over a year, open email box, work sessions, six different public project advisory committee meetings. And so we've had, we've spent a lot of time, as much as we could, just to remind everybody, we've done this in a period of time that none of us imagined, which is the COVID pandemic, where we were unable to get out and meet with people in the community directly, but we've been doing it virtually through the entire process. So we arrive here to where we are now in the late spring, notwithstanding the weather that we have outside. All right, next slide. And so here again, a more detailed element to the project schedule. I don't know that I need to really go through this, but it just reminds everybody what we've been doing with community meetings, work sessions with the Planning Commission, which were all publicly we're all publicly advertised, of course, where people could listen and then respond via our website and emails and our counter has been open and we've certainly been having folks coming in. And so that's, you know, the the process tonight, we have our first hearing and we do have a second one scheduled if necessary. And then the city council would take it up in May and June, coming up. Next slide, please. So I'm just, and the next slide, thanks. Just a quick overview of the project. So our first goal was to increase housing choice and housing affordability for So our first goal was to increase housing choice and housing affordability for all of our community. We recognize that there is a housing cost, you know, crisis, the housing crisis. We, as a city of Hillsborough, have recognized that for many years, our city council has adopted policies and priorities within their own work plans as they direct staff to address this issue for as long as I've worked here. And so we've tried a number of different ways to, to address that. Now we're embracing Housing Hillsborough to continue that journey. And the other goal that this project is trying to do is reduce the barriers for all housing. And that's going to mean different things to different people, but I can assure you, as Chris will get into some of the details of our code, that we have changed a lot of our code to streamline things in a manner that we believe will be meeting or does meet that goal. And of course, we want to be compliant with state legislation and Chris will talk a little bit more about that later in our presentation. So if we could go to the next slide. So with regard to the reduction of barriers, we're, as I'm noting, that's an important component of this project and one of our goals. And so we are doing more than complying with state legislation. We have, as I mentioned a moment ago, adopted Hillsborough Comprehensive Plans from our 2017, completely updated comprehensive plan, goals there that actually asked us to look at middle housing. So we were kind of understanding that this was a part of the housing stock that we needed to continue to look at. In addition, the comprehensive plan very much worked with our 2035 Community Plan, which was adopted back in 2015. So when we mailed those two documents, we really feel like we're receiving a lot of input from the community and the community indicated that, you know, there was a need for more housing. So this all aligns with those things. And of course, the city council, as I mentioned a moment ago, has been setting very specific housing policy priorities for the last three years. And, and another L area that we needed to work on in our community development code was an update to our code around sheltering. We can see that each of us, while we are in the community, that we have people that need permanent sheltering, emergency sheltering. So Chris will talk about those portions of our code here in a bit. And as you've already worked on tonight, we were working on our comp plan to be consistent with these proposed changes. Next slide, please. So here we've got, I got ahead of myself on my notes. These are just some of the different pieces of legislation. There's a bunch of them. This first one is just been passed in the 2020 legislation. And it prohibits cities from using the definition of family to limit residential capacity or relationships on occupancy. Sorry, I'm getting that a little off this evening. And that is in our code, proposed code changes. That's relatively minor, but it is, you know, just important. We want to highlight that we're addressing that. Senate Bill 1051 was passed a few years ago and we've made some changes already in earlier code amendments. But this code amendment that is in front of the Planning Commission tonight goes further to address the clear and objective standards. So we can no longer say it is, you know, something is practicable or is substantially compatible with. We now have to say it's 10 feet or it's eight feet or it's 35 feet or it's 20 feet, but we can't say it's compatible with the surrounding architecture of the homes in the neighborhood or something. We have to come up with specific standards. So we did that and we did that inconsistent with the planned districts throughout this community, including our downtown conservation district, the Yorinco District, so that the sense of all those places is, is kept whole. We haven't, for example, to be very specific, we haven't changed any standards from say 35 feet to 45 feet. There's been nothing like that. Middle housing is also, of course, addressed here. And that's what was the major thrust. Senate Bill 458 was passed in the 2020 legislature and it requires the allowance that middle housing be divided so that it creates an ownership opportunity, which we wholly support and has been a long-term policy effort on behalf of Hillsborough to try to increase the opportunities for ownership to create a ladder of equity for people that, you know, are able to buy a smaller housing unit rather than maybe just a big standard, single-family home. House Bill 2001, of course, is the real nut of all this. This was passed back in the 2019 legislature and it requires all jurisdictions, over 25,000 people in population. That's certainly Hillsborough requires that we allow a duplex on any lot that allows, that's zoned, in a zone that allows for single-family homes. And in the same zones that allow for single-family zones, we are required to allow triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters, townhomes in those zones. So it's, that's, that's the list that we have basically changed all our residential zones. And Chris, again, I'll get into in a little bit. Next slide, please. And now we get into a series of pieces of legislation passed since HB 2001, which includes House Bill 2008, which basically is requiring us to approve affordable housing that is run by nonprofit organizations or religious corporations. And that's an effort to increase the amount of affordable housing that's in communities. In addition, the legislature passed Senate Bill 8, which allows affordable housing. It's sort of a supersiting bill that allows affordable housing in all zones other than heavy industrial, but basically, you know, it allowed in some of the zones where it might not have been allowed before, like a commercial zone or something where we're trying to, we just didn't allow it. So that changes things. So that's been put in the use category. And the final one that we'll talk about tonight here is the House Bill 3261, which allows the conversion of hotels and motels into emergency shelters without conditions, except for, you know, fire life safety types of conditions. So those are the legislation. You can see it's a lot, but again, we felt it was efficient to put them all in one so that we don't spend the next several years just bringing the Planning Commission, the committee, one after another and that we can continue to do other work. So we brought this all together and address housing because it is a critical need. Next slide, please. And so to define middle housing, just to talk about, you know, here it is between single-family detached to apartments, multifamily, it's cottage clusters. It is duplexes, which are attached to, you know, as a single unit, townhomes, attached, single-family units and clusters, triplexes and quadplexes. And we've done some analysis because I think we've heard already testimony in the previous case about concern about the potential impact. And we can't completely predict it, but we've tried to evaluate it using economic and econometric model to look at land value and, and residual land value relative to improvement value and, and sizes of lots. And essentially, the experts at Eco Northwest that we contracted with, which are the state's probably some of the best economists we have, have indicated at this time, they believe that about 3% of the housing stock we'll see over the next 20 years would be through middle housing. And recognizing that we have a lot of units in our community, that's still, you know, a fair amount of middle housing, but it's, it's really going to be regulated by the change as people sell homes. Individual investors will make individual decisions as to whether or not it makes sense. So I just wanted to mention that as we go into the next slide, which shows you the zones. And I should know the number by heart. I believe it's 13 zones that we have that are affected by our, that are affected by this package, particularly House Bill 2001. And you can see this is across the community. I think it's important to note here, and I don't know, Chris, if you were going to mention, so I apologize if you were, that many of the neighborhoods that are affected by zone may not be affected because you have community codes and restrictions that may specifically prohibit your lot from anything but a single-family home. So for those subdivisions that were codified with CCNRs prior to the passage of this legislation, those neighborhoods are not going to be affected necessarily. Now, if two private parties choose to go to, you know, legal battle about it, they could certainly do that. But as far as this city is concerned, you know, it's, it's a matter that's not going to affect those properties. CCNR is after the passage of House Bill 2001. You cannot write, if you wrote it, it would not be legally enforceable. So I hope that's pretty clear. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris, who's going to continue on. And I apologize, this is a fairly lengthy presentation.
Thanks, Colin. And just in case members of the community don't know what CCNRs are, those are, if you live in a, in a community that has a homeowner association, those would be the rules that guide your homeowners association. So. Next slide, please, Don. So the next couple of slides are going to identify the extensive community outreach that has occurred. As Colin had mentioned, a lot of this effort was led by Laura Combs in our long-range planning section. Next slide, please, Don. So starting in early 2021, staff has shared project updates at key stages through a variety of ways. Those have been sent out through email updates, press releases, social media posts and the city's social media accounts, postings and city views, which is a citywide mailer. And then from the Planning Commission's direct involvement in the Housing Hillsborough project, that started when the Planning Commission was tasked with being the Project Advisory Committee. And between January and June of 2021, there were six work sessions that the Planning Commission, as that committee had, all those work sessions were open to the public. Also in early 2021 is when the Housing Hillsborough project webpage went live and it has been continually maintained since then, updated with new information. Then between May and June of 2021, there was an online survey that was available in both English and Spanish. Between June and July 2001, the project team conducted stakeholder interviews with people whose organizations have experience with housing development in Hillsborough. Next slide, please. Then in 2022, in January, the draft version of the code amendments was made available to the public on that project webpage. Understanding that that was hundreds of pages of code, staff wanted to make sure that that was available to the public as early as possible so that the public had an opportunity to review that code. Also understanding that reviewing land development code is not everybody's expertise. It's a very unique set of documents to read through, but the very least, we just wanted to make sure that it was available to the public as early as possible. Then between January and February of this year, there was three additional Planning Commission work sessions that were also open to the public. And we also hosted two virtual community meetings that were noticed and available for the public to join. And then between last month and this month, we issued the notice to the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And then there was also notice published in two newspapers, the Hillsborough Tribune and the Forest Grove New Time. Big one here to stop on, the public notice for this project was mailed to all property owners within those 13 zones that Colin touched on in, in that previous map, or slide with the map. That is the largest mailer that the Planning Division has sent out. And that was intentional to make sure that we captured state requirements for law changes and also making sure that we were providing as much notice as we possibly could. There's been other cities that have not gone through that step, but we felt like it was necessary and the most conservative approach. And then also there was videos posted, and sorry, this should be four languages that were posted on the project webpage and those are up and available even till this day. And then the staff report for both public hearings this evening, those staff reports were issued two weeks in advance. The statutory requirement for staff is seven days ahead, but at the Planning Commission's request, at one of those work sessions back in February, staff committed to getting the staff report issued two weeks in advance to give the Planning Commission and the public as much time to review that. So we've made every effort to make that happen and were able to get that staff report out. And then just this morning, the supplemental staff report was published. They captured public testimony that was received as well as some minor amendments to the findings and that response that we received from the state. Next slide, please. So some metrics on that community outreach, that online survey, staff received over 280 responses to that online survey in those virtual community meetings between January and February. There was a total of 26 members of the public that attended those meetings. After the public notice was mailed out to over 27,000 property owners, staff received approximately 15 inquiries from the public. And then of those 50, there were four parties that identified that they wanted their testimony to be a public testimony attached to the staff report. So that was captured in that supplemental staff report. Three of those were property owners and residents and the fourth was the Port of Portland. So that's all attached in the supplemental staff report. Next slide, please. So the next section of slides, Leslie and I are going to capture highlights of the code amendments. I'll take the, the first grouping of them and then Leslie's going to get into some additional ones. Again, just to point out, these are, these are highlights. There's a lot of more in-depth. If you have the time to look at the staff report in the code amendments, you will see more in-depth descriptions of why certain code amendments are being made relative to which state legislation or beyond that state legislation. So these are just highlights. So as we roll through these, the, the one area Colin touched on this previously, that I identify that staff went beyond state legislation primarily is around sheltering. And we've got a couple of slides that are going to identify why staff did that. All in all, the, the bulk of these amendments being made are for compliance with state law changes. Next slide, please. So definitions, there are a variety of definitions that are being changed. This is just a snapshot of some of those that are important. Staff is admitting definitions for dwelling unit, household. That household change gets back to the deletion of family because of the state legislation that is requiring cities to remove familial, non-familial relations from code. And distinguishing there, we're also providing a lot more clarity in housing types. We've also added definitions for emergency shelter, different projects, housing type projects, as well as middle housing, since that these definitions were not previously in the city's code. Next slide. So in the uses, so that's subchapters 1210 and 1240. Middle housing is being added as a use category. And then we've made amendments to household living and group living to regulate those uses based on the number of bedrooms versus the number of residents. The standards related to accessory dwelling units, which did get a fair amount of attention during the virtual community meetings, are being changed currently. Accessory dwelling units are required to go through a type two land use approval, which is a staff level approval, but still has a public notice and takes approximately four to six weeks. The change to the code will now transition those units to being allowed to go straight to building permitting as long as they meet all the standards of the code. And in addition to allowing those accessory dwelling units on single detached, on lots with single detached units, based on the advisory committee's input, we are also allowing accessory dwellings to be allowed on townhouse lots. There was public testimony received about going beyond these two use allowances and, and allowing accessory dwelling units on lots that have duplexes. But just to remind the Planning Commission, that was a, a clear distinction that the Planning Commission made as the advisory committee to not go beyond allowing accessory dwelling units on single detached or on townhouse lots. And the city is not required to go beyond that based on state law changes. And the city is not required to go beyond that based on state law changes. And then we're also including affordable housing and emergency shelter special use standards. That's both for compliance with state legislation as well as clarity that we'll get into more depth here in a bit. Next slide. So, emergency sheltering, this is where we have gone beyond state legislation. So to, to set the foundation for why we went beyond that state legislation, just remind everybody of House Bill three, two, six, one, that requires cities to allow the conversion of motels and hotels to emergency shelters without conditions except these that are listed. So because of that state legislation, the city had to get more specific on emergency shelters and starting with the definition. So here's the definition that has been added to the city's code. This is consistent with the state law changes. So, soon as we add this definition, then any emergency shelters that go beyond the state legislation would also have to be regulated. So we'll go through a couple of slides and talk about what the city's current regulations are on sheltering and why staff has felt the need to go beyond state legislation. Next slide. So currently, the city does not have a clear use category or process for permanent or year-round shelters. Another description for those type of shelters are non-temporary shelters. So, community members have likely seen temporary versions of shelters throughout the pandemic. Both the city and the county supported their shelters as well as nonprofits in the city. Those temporary shelters are, are not what is being included here in the code. These would be non-temporary shelters that we as a city do not currently have regulations or clear use category for. The state passed needed housing legislation a couple of years ago. And prior to that, the city interpreted our code to re, to put sheltering in the group living category. So, a nonprofit here in the city that we use this use classification for as family promise, they have a facility here in downtown. And then the state passed needed housing legislation in that requires the city to allow needed housing. And after that, the city changed the identification for sheltering and put that in the housing credit category that is in allowed use by right in most zones. So, one of the most prominent projects that's received attention was the Econo Lodge conversion on Tenth Avenue. So, these changes in code were done through zoning verification letters, but were not codified. So codification of changes in code is what we are doing through this amendment. And so staff did those through interpretations, reacting to state law changes and reacting to, you know, the need for these shelters, but didn't go through the final step of codifying the language. So that is what we are recommending through the Housing Hillsborough project is to include this emergency sheltering code amendment section that goes beyond what we're required to do by state legislation. But brings into more clarity and more specificity what non-temporary emergency shelters are defined as and how they're regulated and where they're allowed. So as a for instance, right? Prior to Housing Hillsborough, in the SCCDT zone, which is a downtown zone, when the, when the state passed that needed housing legislation, the use as group living went from requiring conditional use approval, which is a public hearing process, to being permitted by right with no regulations associated with it. So that is our current state of, of the regulations. Next slide. So staff is recommending to recognize the effectiveness of House Bill two thousand and six. So if you're writing down all of the state legislation that Colin touched on, House Bill two thousand and six was not one of the bills that was touched on. This is a separate and apart bill. This has been referred to as supersiting for sheltering. This bill was adopted and was in effect, is in effect. And until June of this year, the state legislature in this past legislative session extended that to June of two thousand and twenty-three. And essentially, that'll require cities to allow shelters in all zones except heavy industrial zones. So we, we have no choice as a city based on this state legislation. What we are doing is that for shelters that don't meet the thresholds for House Bill two thousand and six or shelters that come into the city after House Bill two thousand and six is repealed, which could be as early as June of next, of two thousand and twenty-three, unless the legislature extends it again. We are putting clarity into the code through these amendments to define emergency shelters and specify the allowance of those in all zones. And to allow the conversion shelters, so that terminology of conversion shelters is speaking to the shelters that are required through state legislation and non-temporary emergency shelters, which is the grouping of shelters that staff is recommending to include beyond state legislation as permitted by right in all zones except industrial zones. However, while those uses would be permitted by right, we are recommending special use standards for those shelters that I'll touch on here in the next slide. So the special use standards identify non-temporary shelters as going through a type-one approval process. So this is a staff-level approval process, but ahead of an applicant submitting an application to the city, the special use standards require that they go through a stakeholder engagement process in which they would start off by sending a notice to all property owners within a thousand feet of the property that they are proposing to put the shelter on and engage in that stakeholder engagement process. After that, they would submit details of that stakeholder engagement, what they gleaned from it. And then they would also prepare an operations plan of how they would operate the shelter. And, you know, what staffing would look like in, in a variety of other things. And they would include that operations plan with the submittal of that type-one application. We are also putting separation standards between shelters in these special use standards. And that's both to limit the concentration of them in one specific area of the city. But also to make sure that these shelters could be spread out geographically throughout the city if they are needed. Next slide, please. We're also recommending to limit the number of beds per shelter based on zone. So that gets to the compatibility of these shelters within specific zones relative to the other uses that are allowed in those zones. Also requiring separation from schools for certain shelters, not all, so shelters that would support families. So, you know, a lot of times, the shelters that get a lot of the attention are the low-barrier shelters. Keep in mind that these non-temporary shelters are, are meant to capture all non-temporary shelters. So, an example would be a shelter that supports families that are in need of sheltering. So, we are requiring separation for shelters that are, are for adults from schools. And then we are also putting in these special use standards, suspension, closure, and reopening standards so that it's clear that there are rules that these shelters will have to comply with. And if those rules aren't complied with, there will be a process by which the city can go through suspending or closing the standards. Now, we recognize that this is a lot to be included in this project. But the baseline here is that currently, there are no regulations that the city has in place to regulate these non-temporary shelters. They are permitted by right as housing in most zones in the city. So, that's why staff is going through the process of, of recommending these standards. We have looked at a variety of other cities for best practices that includes Bend, Medford, Portland, Beaverton, and some others. We've been in touch with our community services coordinator here at the city, who is lead on all houselessness initiatives to get input from that staff member. And we've discussed this extensively among staff. And this is the, the recommended language that we have landed on and are presenting for the planning commission's consideration this evening. So that is where I stop and hand it over to Leslie to capture the next section of highlights.
Excuse me, thanks, Chris. Good evening, President Bennett and Commissioners. I'm Leslie Hamilton, Senior Planner with Development Services. I'm going to hit, I wouldn't call it the meat of the, of the amendments, but I do want to touch on the uses and how they're going to change the design and the procedures. And I'll just make a brief note on each one of these slides. So, in the subchapters identified, subchapters twelve, twenty-one to twenty-seven and twelve sixty, these are the zone standards, the overlay standards, and the planned districts. So what's happening in these zones or these sections is that we're identifying what's allowed and where they're allowed. So, those are the thirteen middle, those include the thirteen middle housing zones. And so identifying in those zones that middle housing is allowed, that is kind of the what and the where. The twelve sixty, as I mentioned, are the planned districts. So, that includes the Orenco and the Downtown Conservation District. So those are very specific districts with some more historic standards. As Chris and Colin had mentioned previously, some of the state legislation requires clear and objective standards for housing. So that includes both development standards, such as, you know, lot sizes and density as well as design standards. So, we have to identify a path of clear and objective standards for all types of housing, including those with a historic bent. And that's included in these chapters. Next slide, please. The non-conforming standards are identified in, in subchapter twelve thirty, that includes uses non-conforming lots, non-conforming structures. So not a whole lot of changes here. I do want to point out two things in, in the non-conforming standards that substandard-sized lots, so lots that have a smaller size than the minimum lot size, and there are a number of them over the years. You know, lots get divided up before zoning, that kind of thing. For substandard-sized lots, a single dwelling is allowed, duplex and a townhome. So there are some limitations on middle housing for substandard lots. And for existing non-conforming residential uses, internal conversions to middle housing are permitted as well as small additions to square footage, but that's limited as well. So there are some limited opportunity in non-conforming situations. Next slide, please. The design standards in subchapter twelve fifty, this is the design standards that apply to, you know, landscaping, lighting, parking, trash, tree removal. A number of things have to happen in twelve fifty to implement the Housing Hillsborough. We need to identify clear and objective standards for all of these. As Chris mentions and Colin mentioned, no more, you know, compatibility comments or anything like that. And you'd be surprised how many standards are not clear and objective. So that was actually quite a big lift there. I mentioned earlier that all housing has to have a clear and objective path, so that's identifying what that clear and objective path is through these standards as well as updating the applicability to eat in each of these separate design standards to identify if it's a, applies to middle housing or, or what type of development it applies to. Next slide, please. The procedure section in subchapter twelve seventy, that is, you know, how you get these things done. And what had to be integrated into twelve seventy are the items that are not land use decisions. And I'll get into that in the second, in the next slide. So land use decisions, limited land use decisions, and non-land use decisions. Next slide, please. And the non-land use decisions with the zoning review. So zoning review is, you know, an application for middle housing to build middle housing on a lot through those clear and objective standards. This is not a land use decision, so it doesn't involve appeal, it doesn't involve notice. But there is a review that's set up in twelve eighty to talk about what the steps are and what, what the timing is for those reviews. Yeah, it's a, it's a pretty easy, easy application process. You need to show that you meet the clear and objective standards. Or, you know, setbacks for the design standards that need to apply or to design elements that need to apply and, you know, kind of density. Middle housing land divisions are another part of the middle housing code, and they are also subject to limited, limited appeal, a little bit notice as well, and expedited land, land divisions. Expedited land divisions are not new. They're been part of the ORS for a while, but they are being incorporated into the Hillsborough's code as part of this effort as well. And next slide, please. And these are the applications associated with middle housing. I gave a brief review of those at the previous slides. So zoning review, which is showing compliance with the clear and objective standards for middle housing. The middle housing land division application as well, which is a partition or subdivision of a lot or parcel within thirteen middle housing zones and the expedited land divisions. Next slide, please. There we are, we're on to text amendments. Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie. So last couple of slides here in Stan's presentation. These are reiteration of the approval criteria that the planning commission is considering the text amendments against. So based on these five approval criteria and the findings that staff has written, staff is recommending approval. Next slide, please. And that recommendation and all of the findings are attached to the staff report. One last component that staff wanted to highlight is just this morning, staff from the Oregon Department of Land Conservation Development Department sent staff an email with some thoughts. Next slide, please. And in that email, DLCD staff identified some recommendations to the text amendments or some changes to the text, and they identified those as incredibly minor. Staff has reviewed their recommendations and we are still looking at the recommended changes. Staff would agree that they are minor in nature relative to the overall scope of the project. Most important part of the email that we received this morning was DLCD's identification that the Housing Hillsborough code amendments are mostly consistent and that the city is on the right track in terms of compliance with state law. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was identified for the planning commission, the public, that the state staff who is responsible for tracking compliance of the state law has provided city with this initial take. There are some steps that we still need to go through to make sure that the state sees the final adopted code after the city council's considerations following the planning commission's decision. So, still some final steps, but, you know, very important confirmation to have received from the state this morning. Next slide. So staff is ready and available to answer any of the planning commission's questions. We, similar to the public hearing on the Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan, once the public testimony section begins, we will track the questions and make sure that a staff member is responding to those as they come along. So just want to go back real quickly and just go through the questions again that were identified during the comprehensive plan amendments that were more germane to the community development code. So, single-family house with middle housing will require subdivision. So that's the middle housing land division process that Leslie identified. Then, then what areas would allow middle housing? That was the slide that Colin identified with thirteen zones. Next steps, if they, if this code moves forward, is adopted by the city council, then next steps from there would be processing zoning review and land division applications. Again, that Leslie had identified. And impact on single-family neighborhoods, that was woven in and through the presentation of design standards and, and other standards that staff has woven into the amendments to address that compatibility. And then leave, hopefully, we have provided clarity on which of these provisions went beyond state legislation for the planning commission and for the public. So I will stop there and see if Colin or Leslie or Kathy had anything additional that they wanted to add before we turn it over to the planning commission for questions.
Chris, I just wanted to add to your answer, which was perfect, on the subdivision that Raja answered. The policy question was asked quite some time ago during the project advisory committee stage and was asked and, and discussed again during the work session when we brought the concepts forward. One of the large points that's been made throughout, from the very beginning at the twenty nineteen legislative session session, as well as all the way through this, is that middle housing is a form of housing in the sense of bulk and size and shape that basically fits into the neighborhood. And so the idea is that, you know, the structure is going to look similar. You know, you can put a triplex in, it's just got three front doors instead of one front door and, but it's going to still be required to essentially meet the same height bulk coverage standards as a single family home could. And the idea was that we also have minimum lot sizes and setbacks. So the idea that our community chose through this policy choice was to essentially say, okay, if you have enough land in the back and that, let's say it's a certain zone that requires a 7,000 square foot minimum lot size for a triplex or a quadplex, then you can subdivide and you can have that, just like you would have a single family home back on a flag lot. But we are, we have chosen thus far through our conversations to say, we're not having detached plexes, which essentially is what occurs if you don't subdivide. So I just, I'm, I don't know if I'm giving you the best clarity in that. I just wanted to sort of remind the commission about that particular issue and that we had discussed it at length and, and what the sort of the policy background was for choosing not to do that. Thanks.
It's going in. Looks like Kathy might have a comment to me, President Bennett, before we turn to the questions.
Just a minor clarification, Kathy Corliss, M I G A P G. And, and that was just to note that there are other zones that do allow middle housing already. And so the map of the zones that was highlighted are those zones that are being amended to allow middle housing. Obviously in some of your multifamily zones today, middle housing types would be allowed, not necessarily cottage cluster, some others, but of course our zones that allow townhouses today, obviously you have them. So just wanted to make sure that was clear. There are other zones that would allow middle housing and they do so today.
Thank you very much, Kathy. And that's a, a great point to remind the commission that when we were involved in the 2019 legislation, we pointed out that when we did an inventory here in the city of Hillsborough, we already had 8,000 units of, of middle housing. Because to Kathy's point, we have zones that allowed it and we allowed it through PUDs. So in recognizing the need for the diversity of housing stock, we routinely allowed duplexes and townhomes, apartments, et cetera, in these PUDs along with single family neighborhoods. So we've been a lot more fortunate than other jurisdictions and this legislation will take us further. But just a good reminder that we've been on the right path and, and now we're continuing on that path.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper, Mr. Berry, Ms. Hamilton, Ms. Corliss. We appreciate the very informative presentation. Now's the time for commission members to ask any questions they may have of staff. Who would like to start? Oh, it doesn't look like a big rush. That's for those of you who are listening in and who are not members of the commission, the, don't be misled by the lack of questions. We've been working, as indicated in the presentation, we've been working with the staff for well over a year on this. And the members of the commission have been through a lot of this. And the fact that there are no questions from the commission shouldn't be, shouldn't let you be led to believe that we're confused by what's going on. I think a lot of this has be, has come into focus for all of us over that time period. And reflects the good work that staff has done. Dawn, is there anyone who has pre-registered to testify on this application? As was the case with the hearing for the comprehensive plan amendments, we'll limit testimony for members of the public to four minutes each.
Okay. Yes. And while we do have folks who have registered not knowing exactly whether they're in favor or opposition, we could use the raise hand function again and go that route?
Yeah, I, here's my thinking on this. I, I'm not sure we need to separate people who are for it against. I think that given the number of people who are interested will know kind of what their concerns and questions are as, as they testify. So just in the, in the sake of keeping the meeting streamlined, let's just take people as they come and the staff will do a good job of making sure they record the questions that they have and being prepared to respond to them after the testimony is completed. So just why don't we just start with whoever's first?
Okay. So if anyone would like to testify on this item, please use the raise hand button located at the bottom of the Zoom toolbar. If you're joining via phone, please use star nine. You'll be called upon and unmuted for four minutes, as President Bennett mentioned. Your camera will not be turned on. Please state and spell your name for the record. You do not need to state your address here, but it would be helpful if you want to be included in the record to email your address to planning@hillsborough-oregon.gov. So the first person that we have on the list, get my mouse. It looks like we have Rajah Monam. And I will first let me share my screen to get our timer up. One moment.
And for those members of the public, the most important thing for the planning commission members is the spelling and pronunciation of your, your name. We want to make sure that we're respectful of your name and, and the easiest way for us to do so is to hear it from you first.
Rajah, you are unmuted. You may start by stating your name, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, I'm Rajah Ajiye. I sent an email later, so you should have my correct spelling in case if you can't understand me. Now, first of all, I want to start by saying this is a, there are a lot of good changes happening here and we all have a wish list. But in respect of that, there are a lot of good changes going to come with this. I asked the question earlier and then that was answered. Extension of that question is where we have a single family lot and then can we build a townhouse with their dividing? If that is not allowed, can we attach houses? Essentially you attach a duplex to a single family house. That's the question number one I have now. That means that goes without saying, can we attach without dividing the lot? Essentially the idea is if we, if we save 100K not dividing the lot, that the money goes to the end user, whoever waste the lot, it just makes it everything affordable. That's, that's the question number one. Question number two, I research literally with a lot of cities of, cities throughout the country that allows secondary use or just wondering if that's an option. Those two are the questions I have. And again, I want to reiterate, there are a lot of good changes happening here, you know. Thank you, thank you all for making this happen.
Thank you for your testimony. Who is next, Dawn?
Next up, we have Colleen. Unmute. Colleen, if you could please state and spell your name for the record, you'll have four minutes.
My name is Colleen Gursky, C O L E E N G U R S K E. And I have several concerns as a property owner here. I live in the, near Hairfield. And this announcement that came out on March 16th was the first time I had ever heard about this. And it's true, I'm not that involved in, in Hillsborough planning and, and politics. But I am concerned that out of the 27,000 plus, you only, I don't know how many are on, but it seems like when you had the online feedback, there were only 285 that just doesn't seem like a real good sample. My concern is when you add people to the, to the community, what about schools? What about traffic? What about safety? What about transportation? And I have those questions. And what about these emergency shelters? Who's paying for it? Like the one that you talked about, this is, are, is, are, is the taxpayer paying rent to the owner of the building that's being used for the shelter? Or is that coming out of our taxes? That's a question. Can I get a copy of the slides and this recording? That's another question. I guess bottom line, I don't like the idea of getting rid of single family home. It just seems like this is taking on a woke culture in our, in our laws that really kind of disturbs me. I don't know why we need to plan to have more people in here. I know they're needy, but I don't think by adding more people to these homes, there's a lot more to their needs than just providing shelter. I don't know what your full plan is. I'm really kind of disappointed. Sorry, I'm having to say that, but I'm worried. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Gursky. We will make, make sure that we respond to each and every one of your questions when we get to the end of the testimony tonight. Thank you again. Who's next going, or Dawn?
Next, we have Mo. And Mo, if you could please state and spell your name for the record, you'll have four minutes.
My first name is Mo, M O, last name J D S A, J A D Y. And my concern also is when we mentioned cutting trees and clearing land, I lived in Los Angeles for 50 years before I moved to Hillsborough two years ago. And we used to get plenty of rain in LA when we had a lot of trees. And as you know, now there's drought, there's not one drop of rain. I mean, there's maybe rains one or two days a year. And if we cut the trees and just, and so if we get to build buildings, I think we should have some green space left around each property to, because trees to provide moisture in the atmosphere and that makes rain and clouds. And so we have to really think about nature and future generations and the environment, you know, getting water because without water, we really can't live. I'm a respiratory therapist, without, without trees, there's no oxygen, there's no fresh air, there is no house for the trees, there's no, there's no shade, there's not, I mean, each tree, there was my old neighborhood in LA, they cut one big tree down, but there were no rules for cutting trees and, and the temperature in that neighborhood went up by like two degrees in, in, in middle of summer. And it truly does affect, I mean, you, you have to think about future generation, not just about us in this moment. And also COVID, overpopulation, you have to be concerned with COVID and because COVID is going to be around for a while, being a respiratory therapist. So we have to really be careful about to make a, go over concentration of people in one, one space. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony this evening, Dawn. Who's next on our list?
Next, we have A K. And I am unmuting, if you could please state and spell your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Abhishek Karanik. That's A B H I S H E K, last name K A R N I K. So hearing the hearing, listening to the hearings, my observation was very similar to Colleen, which is that given the volume of, of the area that you are considering for these projects, the response is very low, which means that like, no matter how many, you know, I don't know how well it has been communicated to this, to the, to the people in this, in the Hillsborough. Because like Colleen, even I got notification of this two weeks before this call. You know, I went and read between the last call and this call, I tried to read the description. It's very, it's very basic. So, you know, my, my concern is the same that I'm not sure if a lot of people are aware of this. The second question I had is that I do own a single family home and I would, you know, I'm not sure about how that process will be that converts a single family lot to a multi-family order of town. Is that by choice? Is that something that, you know, you will wait for the owners to sell and then it will get converted at some point? Like, what are the options there? I'm not quite, I'm not quite clear on that piece. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Carmel, we'll, we'll do our best, the staff will do our best to kind of explain how that process works and whether it's something that is purely by choice or whether it's something that's inevitable. I think you'll find that it's certainly something that no one is going to be required to do, but I'll let staff elaborate, elaborate on that at the time. Thank you. Dawn, who's next?
Next, we have Olga and I will unmute Olga now.
Thank you.
Olga, if you could please state and spell your name for the record, you'll have four minutes to testify.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Olga Debakey. That's O L G A D E B A K E Y. And yeah, I kind of am seconding all of the previous callers. So Colleen, I also had not heard about what was going on from the letter that, that I got on March 16th. So, yeah, just kind of curious why so, so much information has been shared about this, but I, this is the first time I had heard of it. So that's why I'm joining this meeting to find out more. And I really appreciate the overview you gave of everything. So that was helpful. But yeah, I am concerned mainly about, for example, I live in Hidden Creek and on 53rd Avenue now they're currently in the process of, they cleared a field and they're building the affordable housing apartments there. And there were some giant trees and they weren't even in the middle of the property. They were on the edge and they provided a lot of shade. And I'm, I'm really concerned about that. That's one of the jewels of living here is all the nature and the very, very big trees here. And I'm just wondering who is kind of looking out for preserving that? Because I mean, a building can be built and still preserve the tree that's on the edge of it. And there's, there could be an effort to, to try to keep those, all the nature that's around us. So I'm just kind of, that's my main concern. Who's looking out for that to preserve the nature? And then if we have further questions coming up, who, who could we reach out to? Is there like some of them could email or who, who would be the contact person for future questions? And that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your testimony. We'll get those answers to you soon tonight. Thank you. Dawn, who's next?
President Bennett, we have Chung No, and I will unmute him now. If you could state your name and spell it for the record, please. You'll have four minutes.
Hi, my name is Chung No, C G S U N G. I have concern about the plan around the city, around Hillsborough, you think there's a lot of land over there. If we actually looking for the, the future for our, our children, like five year, 10 year, 20 year, the population will increase. Why don't we actually take a look outside of Hillsborough to actually, you know, develop a new residence or area instead of plan to actually put in, you know, more housing in the middle of crowds area already. So this is like, this is, if we, if we look at like in the next five year, there will be more people and there's not enough room to just book anymore in there. Because when the population actually increase, they require a lot of logistics, like hospital, school, traffic, it's a lot of things. And pollution. So I'm, that's my, my, my bigger concern right now. Instead of put everything in some, some area that's already ground, why don't we actually think outside the box? Outside of the box where we have a lot of land around, around Hillsborough. So we can actually start from there in the next five years, 20 years. And people are actually going to be spreading out instead of concentrating on one area. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Thank you for your comments. I, it, it's interesting to, to listen to them because the questions that you have are very similar to the questions that we planning commission members had for the staff. we planning commission members had for the staff earlier on in this process. So, um, it's good to know that, that the questions we had are being track, are tracking with the questions that the community at large has. And the staff will, again, they'll have answers for us toward the end of the hearing tonight. Thank you. Dawn, who's next?
President Bennett, we have no other hands raised at this time. Oh, except Lou James, who just raised a hand. We had a couple have come up just a moment here.
Okay. Just a reminder, please, when you come, when you testify, give us your, your full name and spell your last name at least.
Okay, Lou, I am unmuting you now. If you could please state your name and spell your name.
Can you hear me now? Yes. My name is Lou James, L-O-U-J-A-M-E-S. And, um, I'm most concerned about the, what this is going to do to established neighborhoods. I live in a place, not a fancy place, but we like our neighborhood. It is pleasant. We have lots of trees and open spaces. We have, um, fairly good sized lots. And I can't imagine having what you folks are suggesting being added to our neighborhood. It seems to me that all of the established neighborhoods in our city should be able to not have the character of them changed by adding these various kinds of, of housing, the middle housing and all the rest of it. So I, I think we need to recognize that we buy a house someplace because, partly because we like the community that it has. You know, we, we came here and found this or that or something else. We buy a house in a place that we like and we like it the way it is. It seems to me that these, all of these ideas, which I must admit, smack of social engineering in my mind. They, it seems to me that would be a good play, thing to try in these new areas that are being built, like South Hillsborough and all of the different kinds of housing options that are there. If, if folks want to live like that, being packed in really tightly and have triplexes and duplexes and townhouses and cottage clusters and all of those other things, uh, that's all right, but I would really like to see current zoning things, particularly the residential family. And by the way, the word family is important. A family is the basis of our society. And it, it saddens me to see family being pushed aside as if it's not important. So I want to see residential, single family dwellings remain a part of what's going on. In fact, I would suggest that those of us who choose to stay under the, could choose to stay under the older regulations and be grandfathered in. We're not depriving anyone of coming and buying a house in our neighborhood. We simply like our neighborhood the way it is. We don't want to have it, uh, change the whole, the whole feel and the whole look of our neighborhood changed just to satisfy, as one person said, this kind of woke idea. Hopefully that's not even going to be an issue in 20 years, maybe less than that. But I'm just really concerned that we don't, we don't abandon, uh, the family, single family residential model. And this plan appears to be doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony tonight. Anyone else, Dawn?
Yes, we have Anna Wong. Anna, I will unmute you now. If you could state and spell your name for the record and you will have four minutes to testify.
All right. My name is Anna Wong, W-A-N-G. I second what everyone said earlier. This is the first time I hear about this change from a letter that I received in March. I still confused what's going on. I know you guys want to increase the middle housing, but how's all this impacting me? So I'm no lawyer, uh, so I want to know who can I contact? Who can tell me in simple English, how this is going to impact my resident? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. Okay. Who's next, Dawn?
Okay, we have Stacy Stortzum. Stacy, I will unmute you. If you could please, um, state and spell your name for the record. You will have four minutes to testify. And Stacy, are you unable to unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. So it's Stacy, S-T-A-C-I-E, last name Stortzum, S-T-O-R-T-Z-U-M. And I live in historic Orenco and currently we have middle housing that is going up right now. It is an eight bedroom, nine bathroom, 4,200 square foot, 35 foot high building or dwelling. And from what I understand, it is, um, going to be used as, and all the eight bedrooms are going to be individually rented out. And I've been, um, trying to, I submitted a, a written testimony. I'm not sure if my questions are going to be answered, but I've been trying to get clarification on how these tenants or where these tenants are going to be parking. Because we have very narrow streets here in older Orenco. And from what I understand with the, the code amendment, the builder or the owner is only supposed to supply a minimum of a point five to, uh, per bedroom parking spot with a maximum of one parking spot per bedroom. So that should be anywhere from four to eight parking spots. So I'm just wondering where is the overflow parking gonna, where, how is that going to affect our neighborhood? And, and traffic, we also don't have, um, we, we don't have streetlights here. Minimum stop sign. So it's going to increase the amount of traffic here. And we have a lot of pedestrians walking over to the nature park. So I, I would like that answered. That's all. Thanks.
Thanks for your testimony, Ms. Stortzum. Again, similar questions to what your planning commissioners have been asking staff for the last 18 months. So I'm sure we'll have answers tonight. Thank you. Dawn, who's next on our list?
Next, we have Dirk Knudsen. Dirk, please state and spell your name for the record. You'll have four minutes.
Dirk Knudsen, D-I-R-K-K-N-U-D-S-E-N. Gosh, I can't believe they have four minutes after staff had an hour. I don't know how this is supposed to be a public hearing on the most important land use matter before the Hillsborough Planning Commission in 45 years. So I'm just going to comment on what I can. Number one, you better have a second meeting. We were promised a second meeting throughout this process, two public hearings. I don't know if a public hearing really includes four minutes. That seems like a slam to any of these people that are trying to talk. That's my opinion. Number two, I've asked for case studies multiple times. Planning Commission, you guys are in charge of this. You're approving this and according to Colin, you wrote all these codes. So show me how this works because I'm finding many, many properties that I'm involved with for clients trying to provide affordable housing. None of this works. Number three, language barriers. Tonight we had multiple language barriers, no interpreters, no accommodations, no lens for thinking about people who don't speak English. Staff presented a tremendous amount of new oper, new information tonight. You cannot make a decision tonight. That would be woefully wrong to do that. People aren't understanding what's being presented. You see that tonight. Chris from planning, who I think is one of the greatest planners working, he didn't have enough time to address the code sections tonight, quote unquote. Chris Crane talked about the legal aspects of this. Basically, it challenged anybody that didn't like this to appeal, if they could find a way to appeal. What the hell kind of a way is that for Hillsborough to go forward? Joe Grillo, you said you can't answer all the questions tonight. Jeff, you said, "We're moving ahead with quote, the Hillsborough way." And what in the hell is that? I've been here 59 years. I can tell you 19 versions of the Hillsborough way and I want to hear yours, Jeff. I like you, but I want to hear your version. Chris lightly covered the amendments, said, quote unquote, "He could not cover them all tonight." The project team, a great group of local planners, although all local, the project team was everyone involved in Hillsborough now, nobody from the outside, nobody that's a housing expert. Colin talked about MIG APG consulting, but there's no reports on the Housing Hillsborough website about what they consulted about. No public engagement on those issues. Folks are coming in in good faith tonight, asking questions, and I think we've seen some good ones tonight. Echo Northwest was quoted tonight, not in the case file. Chris said, "We sent the largest mailer ever." The video that was put out was just posted. This was not a great effort for public engagement. You heard that from multiple people tonight. The emergency shelter codes, while they're important, they shouldn't have been in this piece of code and they're opening this whole code up to an appeal. I'm in favor of what staff presented, but it should have been done differently. I don't think we've clearly defined clear and objective standards under 12.80, as Leslie stated. And I have been to the city's staff several times about how this works on individual lots to tell how this is really going to affect all of us and have had no definitive answers. Staff, we have a lot more work to do. Thank you for the work you've done. Planning Commission, we need more time. We need more time. You can't pass this tonight. Period. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Knudsen, thank you very much for keeping your comments within the four minute time period that we've allowed for everyone else. We appreciate that very much. Um, we also appreciate your, um, willingness and time to dig into this and, and study it and share your thoughts and concerns with the planning commission. We'll certainly, you know, they won't fall on deaf ears. Well, I've certainly noted down all of your questions and we'll do our best to answer them for you tonight. Thank you. Dawn, do we have anyone else?
Yes, we do. We have Karen Oberkamp. And Karen, I will unmute you now. If you could please state and spell your name for the record. You will have four minutes. Karen, can you hear us? Karen, it appears you're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
You sure can.
Oh, finally. Okay, sorry. I just don't want to go on record saying, uh, like some other people have said.
Karen, can we get you to spell your last name for us, please? I'm sort of arguing like that.
O-B-E-R-K-A-M-P-F, as in Frank. Okay. So, so, um, we just got this letter last month and this was the first time we heard anything about this. And we thought this was going to be more like a public forum where people could state, uh, what they think about these changes and, um, maybe have some kind of voice in the process and we have the people be considered and what's happening. But, um, it's clear that this whole thing was already a foregone conclusion and everything had already been decided and it's a done deal. And after it's already been done and decided, then you have this thing where, um, you pretend like, uh, it matters what people say, but it clearly, it doesn't really matter what 90% of us think. It's just, this is just going to be, um, shoved down our throats, basically, whether we like it or not. And, uh, and we're just kind of going through the motions of pretending like the people's desires are, you know, matter. And, um, you know, I've, we bought our house here 19 years ago. And like another lady said, we bought a single family home in a neighborhood of single family homes because we want to live in a neighborhood of single family homes. And, um, our neighborhood and our area shouldn't be changed in character to satisfy someone else who doesn't live here. It should be, it should be kept the way it was when, uh, when we bought in. And, uh, to be a Orenco lady, I would say sell your house now while you can because, uh, the traffic is going to be bad, the parking is going to be bad. People are going to park in front of your house all the time. And, uh, leave now while you can still get good money for your house. So, um, I guess I would like to say in future, it would be nice if the people had more of a chance to, um, have a voice and that the residents who live here and want to live here, should have more of an opportunity to be a part of all this decision making, instead of it just being foisted upon us and then, and then after it's already done, say, oh, by the way, well, what do you think? So, I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Oberkamp. Um, I have a quick question for you. Um, I'm sure you were listening to the staff's original presentation and, and heard them outline that there are a number of state statutes that include requirements that the city incorporate into its committed development code with regard to this middle housing. And, um, I hope you appreciate the fact that, you know, we have, have a series of state statutes that are sitting out there that say, do this and do that. And that the charge of the planning commission right now, is to make sure that the city's land use regulations reflect the requirements of those statutes. Are there specific requirements of those statutes that you don't think we comply with? Or do you just not agree with what the legislature is asking the city to do here?
I don't agree with what the legislature is asking the city to do. And I believe that at least 90% of homeowners in Hillsborough do not want this. And the legislature probably knows that the people who live here do not want this and they don't care. They've got their own agenda and they're going to do it no matter what. And I wish, my wish would be in a perfect world, I wish that the city of Hillsborough would have said, hey, you know what, before we decide to go along with this, we're going to put it to the voters and we're going to give the people a real chance to say if they want it or not. And we'll have a referendum. And if the people of Hillsborough who live here and own homes here vote and say, yeah, we want to do this, then we do it. But if the people say no, then we don't do it. I wish the city would, uh, do whatever they could to be more representative of, of the residents of Hillsborough and not just kind of, uh, you know, just roll you know, just roll over and take it. You know, like you mentioned, the neighborhoods that have the HOAs or the CCRs or whatever, they can be, they're sort of like opted out of it. Why can't Hillsborough really, really listen to the people and really let the people have a voice? And let the people of Hillsborough say whether we want to go along or not?
Well, I guess I'll let the city attorney respond to what the city can and can't do with regard to, you know, challenging or basically telling the state that we're not going to do what state laws require us to do. But, but you have to understand, at least from my perspective, that there's a set of constraints that the city has to live within. And those constraints come in the form of state statutes. The city doesn't really have a choice of just saying, "Well, we're going to follow these statutes, but we're not going to follow other statutes." That's, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, that's the way our society works. And I understand that some people may not like what the statutes are requiring the city to do. But I don't believe we have to, we as a planning commission or the city have the choice of just saying no to what the state statutes say. Can you weigh in on this, Mr. Green, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just say that I've attended a number of these sessions across a number of cities, and there is, I would say, widespread displeasure with a lot of these laws, a lot of these statutes. And I would encourage anyone who's interested to read Senate, our House Bill two thousand and one, or Senate Bill four fifty-eight, or any of the other pieces of legislation that Mr. Cooper listed and put on the screen at the beginning of his presentation. The best distillation I can give is the difference between the words "may" and "shall." The stat- House Bill two thousand and one does not say the city may allow duplexes, triplexes, and townhouses in any zone that allow single families. It says the city shall. May means may and shall means shall. We simply do not have the discretion not to allow a lot of these middle housing types in single-family zones. The intent of the legislature is fairly clear. Their intent was to do away with single-family zoning, and we cannot simply ignore the specific directives of the legislature, much as we want, much as we might like to. I'm reminded of the question that was asked during the last hearing on the comp plan amendments, how much of this aggravation should be directed at the legislature and how much of it is of the city's doing? And the answer is most of it's from the legislature, but the difference is "may" and "shall." And the legislation does not say the city may do these things. It says the city must do these things. So I don't know how to be much clearer than that, but the era of local control has largely evaporated. The city just simply doesn't have a whole lot of discretion in these code amendments. Does that answer your question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Green, I appreciate that. Yes, it does. And I want you to know, Ms. Oberkamp, I wasn't picking on you. My, my response to your comments was not intended to be personal to what you raised. It, it was intended to address some of the issues that a number of people have raised tonight, which is, why can't we just do it the way we want to do it? And the short answer to that question is because state law says we can't. I don't like to hide behind state law, but the bottom line is the state law is what the state law is. You know, we don't have the discretion to, to have seventy mile an hour, you know, speed limits on Cornell Road. We don't have the discretion to ignore criminal state statutes. We don't have the discretion to, to not have daylight savings time in Washington County. A lot of our laws are, are generalized for a reason, and there certainly are reasons behind this one, and whether we agree or disagree with them as planning commission members. One of the things we must do is follow what the law says. And that's why I asked you whether you disagreed with the law or whether you disagreed with whether we were putting things in our code that were inconsistent with what the law requires. And we can deal with the second thing. We can't really deal with the first. So I just wanted to get that out there, just so people understood, at least from my perspective, where the planning commission does and doesn't have discretion here. Ms. Oberkamp, did you have any response? I certainly would like to give you a minute or so to respond to that, if, if you would like to.
Well, I guess it comes back to, like I said, this, this thing is, is a foregone conclusion, and the people most affected by it, we found out about it after it was a done deal. And I personally, I think there are enough smart people in your group. You have a lawyer. It seems to me that someone who was smart and clever and could think outside the box could find a way legally to help the people fight against this thing that the state legislature has decided. Like, can we come along and add some bylaws or can we add some other, you know, regulations that don't, you know, specifically try, try to negate or avoid the law? But could we, you know, like, what if my neighborhood suddenly, you know, developed an HOA and said, "Oh, our HOA says this is single, single-family homes only." Or, you know, I mean, I'm sure there's, there are ways that we could keep our neighborhoods the way they are without running afoul of the law. But it, it wouldn't be easy, but obviously, everyone who's called in tonight is against this. And everyone feels like they had no notice, and everyone is scared to death about what's going to happen. You know, next door to them, if somebody sells the house and it becomes an eight-bedroom, who knows what? You know, the people, people overwhelmingly are, are against it, and it seems like it should be something that we could do. That's all I'm saying.
Well, thank you for your additional comments. We'll certainly take them into consideration as we deliberate toward a decision here tonight. Dawn, do we have anyone else who's?
Chair, chairman. I have a point of order. I apologize. Commissioner Thrall Nash had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think Commissioner Grillo had his hand up before I did. If you'd like to go ahead and say what he wanted to say first.
President Bennett, I appreciate your comments. I would urge us to get through the public hearing so that we could have some commission comments that might be beneficial or not beneficial to the people that have chosen to participate. I appreciate Mr. and Mrs. Oberkamp's conversation, but I would urge the chair to move through the public hearing as fast as we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Thrall, Commissioner Thrall Nash, please.
Well, then I'll hold my comments for the end.
All right. Ms. Dury, anyone else to testify tonight?
Yes, President Bennett, we have Jagan Reddy, and I apologize if I did not say that correctly. If you could please state and spell your name for the record, and we, you will have four minutes to testify.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My first name is Jagan. It's spelled as J-A-G-A-N. My last name is Reddy, R-E-D-D-Y. I am in highly favor, favorable to building the affordable housings around the city. You know, the inflation is extremely high. There are a lot of unfortunate, less fortunate people in the community with the low income, with the low, low-income families with lots of the kids and, you know, we have to think about the, it's definitely important to maintain the neighborhood beauty. You know, I, I live in a single, I, I prefer, I prefer my neighborhood to stay the same, exactly, single-family homes. But it is more important to be more kind to other people and then build these affordable, low-income affordable homes around the city as much as possible. It is, is, is our duty as a, as a, as a humanity to support other human for, to, they, they have the families and they have the kids, et cetera. So it's important for us to at least be in favorable to approve the low-income family affordable communities, apartments, whatever. They could be that type of homes to, on an urgent basis, for sure. You know, these high-density homes are, are, are problem when, when COVID was predominant. But it is, COVID is, is just another, 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 it will pass too, you know, it's not going to be here forever. And then, you know, humanity will survive any, any type of pandemics. But it is important to build the low-income affordable homes for low-income families on an urgent basis. Inflation is high. Gas, gallon of gas is five dollars, and then gallon of milk is four dollars. Not everybody is fortunate to, you know, to spend a thousand dollars on an apartment to live in this, you know, single-bedroom or double-bedroom apartment. So it's important for us as a community to be kind to the fellow, fellow human. And building these affordable homes is, is quite important as a city, as a government, as a, as a, you know, as a nation for that matter, you know. I see the, the, when I go to the downtown, you know, my heart breaks and seeing all the people living in those torn tents in, in cold weather. It's, it's pretty unfortunate to see this country, such a rich country. People going through that sort of, that sort of suffering is, is not at all acceptable. I'm in favor, hundred percent, of building the low-income affordable community. I don't want to comment about the multiplexes, duplexes. But I want to support the low-income people with, you know, less fortunate people. So I'm in favor. Thank you for all your changes, City of Hillsborough and Planning Department, at least for, in, 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 in respect to the affordable houses, whatever the plan. They can build the affordable homes on any, on any lot, on any property with whatever it says, industrial, I think, sites. Apart from that, building them on any lot is, is highly appreciated, appreciated, appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Who's next, Dawn?
Next up, we have Joanna Hofer. Joanna, I will unmute you now, and if you could please state and spell your name for the record. You will have four minutes to testify.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. My name is Joanna Hofer, J-O-A-N-N-A-H-O-F-E-R. I only just yesterday heard about this. I live a busy life, just like everybody else. And I've had my own issues, my own problems, and I just feel bad if I didn't chime in and at least take this opportunity to say something. I wanted to echo Ms. Oberkamp. I really appreciate her testimony and many others who have taken part in this discussion. And I, I'm not well-versed in this. Like I said, this only recently came to my attention. I have witnessed what's happened in Portland when, when the single-family lots have been divided up and how that changed the nature of those neighborhoods. From places where you could walk around to places that were very densely populated with lots of cars that were no longer safe for pedestrians. I came to this area and put a large amount of money into a down payment, actually, my whole life savings, into a down payment for this house. I bought here because I love this neighborhood, because I love trees, because I've worked hard all my life. And in the last couple of years, I think these, like, maybe twenty big giant trees have been taken down. And just like everybody else who's, who's worked hard and come here and, you know, done everything right that we're supposed to do. This is where I wanted to spend the rest of my life when I retire and enjoy this beautiful place and this beautiful neighborhood. I've worked hard for it. The people here on this call also work hard for it. My heart also goes out to the people in Portland downtown. There's lots of drug use. There's things that I have witnessed that I cannot believe. I've traveled around the world, India, Mexico, Russia, Ukraine. I've never in my life seen what I've seen on the streets downtown Portland, and I don't want to see that here. You know, I've worked hard. I went to the university. I went to graduate school. I worked my way through graduate school. I've worked a couple of jobs, you know? And now I come and I want to live in this neighborhood. I love this neighborhood. I love the way it looks. And when we get rid of the characteristics of this neighborhood, they're gone for a generation. Those big trees, they're not going to grow back in my lifetime. They're not going to grow back in our children's lifetimes. They're gone. And when somebody builds a big multi-family, you know, whatever it is right next door, because my neighbor sold their lot, the street is different. The whole character of the neighborhood is different. So I just wanted to, to raise that issue, and somebody said there might be a vote tonight, as I said. I don't know what's going on. My neighbor just told me about this. I've been going to work every day, head down, pay my bills, you know, taking care of people I care about in my life. And I'm sad if there's a decision tonight. And like Mrs. Over, or Ms. Oberkamp said, I don't understand why we can't think outside the box on this. I don't understand why we can't legal up, you know? I don't understand why people smarter than me can't come and say, "Hey, legislature, we don't like this idea. We want to vote." Is this a representative democracy or not? I don't know. I don't know anymore. It doesn't feel like it. I also don't want to pay dues to homeowners association. I feel like I already paid enough money. I pay federal income tax. I pay state income tax. I pay property tax. And now I'm going to have to pay a homeowners association. So I feel like I've paid enough. But thank you very much for your time and the opportunity to comment and for my four minutes.
Thank you for your comments. We, we appreciate them. And we'll certainly try to take them into consideration to the extent that we're allowed to by the laws that apply to us. Dawn, do we have anyone else?
President Bennett, we don't currently have any hands raised this time, but I wanted to take the opportunity to remind those who have not yet testified, you are welcome to raise your hand. And for those who, there are a couple of folks joining by telephone. If you want to raise your hand, you'd use the star nine on your phone.
Okay, well, why don't we, why don't we break, not necess- not, not a formal break, but why don't we wait for, you know, fifteen, twenty seconds and see if anybody does that before we move to the next segment of the hearing. Thank you.
Not seeing anybody coming forward at this time soon.
Okay. Well, having heard the testimony this evening and hearing that there are no further people who are with us tonight who are interested in in testifying. Staff, this would be the time for staff to provide any comments that they may have or to provide answers to some of the questions or all of the questions that, at least the pertinent ones that were, were asked tonight. So take it away, Mr. Cooper or Mr. Berry. I'm assuming we'll start.
Yeah, President Bennett, I was going to suggest a possible break for all those here at the hearing for just, you know, maybe a bio break for five or ten minutes.
What are, what are the wishes of the commission? You wish to take a break. It's ten minutes to nine.
I think a break would be very welcome.
President Bennett, I make a suggestion to both you and the commission as well as Mr. Cooper. We have a lot of people that are hanging here and wondering whether or not this is going to be the last time they're going to be able to testify, and they've got a lot of questions. And they've got a lot of questions. And I'm, I'm just throwing this out. There's this. Should we perhaps signal that a majority of us are willing to continue the public hearing to another date certain, so that people that have graciously come before us tonight, perhaps might want to come back again, don't have to wait around. I don't know if I'm out of order or not, President Bennett, but.
Well, I think let's, just a thought, from, from my viewpoint, the, the way our procedures work in our own planning commission procedurals manual. As we, we proceed the way we have tonight, we listen to comments of staff. At that time, we asked for a motion to close or continue the hearing. And I think at that point in time, if you want to make a motion, you're welcome to make a motion at that time. But I think it's, I think the staff commentary comes first. Is there anyone who does not want to take a ten-minute break on the commission? Seeing none, we're going to break for 10 minutes. It's eight fifty-three. We'll be back at nine oh three promptly. Okay, do we have everybody back? Are we missing anyone? Okay, this is Chair Bennett. It is nine oh three. We're resuming the hearing on the the modifications to the committee development code as part of the, the Housing Hillsborough project. This is the time, given that there's no further public testimony, this is the time for the staff to provide further comments, to respond to questions that were raised by the public during the testimony. I'm sure that you kept good track of the questions that were raised. I did, so I'll, I'm not going to ask them, but to the extent that anything doesn't get addressed, so I'll chime in when it's appropriate. And the other commissioners should do so as well. So time for Mr. Cooper and staff to respond.
Thank you, President Bennett. This is Chris Barry. I'm going to get us kicked off. One thing that we just want to reiterate for the public that has testified, if you could please email your mailing address to planning@hillsboro-oregon.gov. Either this evening or tomorrow morning. That's important for us to keep them involved and informed as interested parties on the documentation that comes out of the decisions related to the amendments. So super important, if you would like to stay engaged and informed, for you to send your mailing address to planning@hillsboro-oregon.gov. So Leslie, Colin, and I are all going to take bits of the public testimony. And we've got an overall response that I'm going to capture here. And then Colin's going to touch on some of the, the larger, broader components to this project. Then I'm going to get into some of the community engagement, public records realm. Then Leslie is going to get into some of the specific design standard questions that were raised. And then I'll wrap up with some final comments before we turn it back over to the planning commission. So we, we truly appreciate the public testimony and the, the level of engagement tonight. And hope that the responses that we're about to provide are taken as sincere and earnest responses to, in respecting that public testimony. So Colin will turn it over to you to, to capture the broader elements.
Thanks very much, Chris. And I just want to reiterate that we very much always appreciate the hearing process and the fact that our community members for whom we work have come out to testify. And so I'm going to start with some of the comments regarding the legislation and the process. I want to assure the commission and those who've testified tonight that the city of Hillsborough was very actively involved with the Oregon Legislature when they began to formulate this idea, this legislation. And we actively participated through our government affairs manager, through Laura Kelly and myself going to Salem and working with the Oregon Legislature. Because I can assure you that as I work for both this commission and the residents of this community, that what we like to do is we like to plan at the local level. We don't enjoy state mandates. So we worked hard to minimize that impact as much as we could. Honestly, at the end, House Bill two thousand and one was passed with essentially, you know, a very strong direction. And so that left our control. The next step was the administrative rule process, which was a one year. I personally sat on that board for one year. We met monthly and actually met a few times in the last few months. So we met twice a month in the last couple of months. We were very actively engaged. And I can assure you once again to the commission and to the members of the community that are listening, that we pressed as hard as we could within the then boundaries of the statutory legislation that was passed by House Bill two thousand and one. We worked very diligently to try to maintain as much local control as possible or the flexibility within the administrative rules, so that we could try to find our own local flexibility. Because I think we all appreciate the city of Hillsborough for how we've all collectively planned it and invested in it and grow it. And so I wanted to really emphasize those points on our active involvement. The second thing I want to talk about is infrastructure. As, and, and it's important for the commission to remember, we've mentioned this in work sessions and way back in the project advisory committee, is that our population projection has not increased. We continue to, in, to twenty forty-five, project about one hundred and fifty-five to one hundred and sixty thousand people in this community. And we do that through a series of growth areas like South Hillsborough, Wichita Village South, Amber Glen, downtown increased density that we'll see with the redevelopment of places like Block sixty-seven. So the population projection is not changing. Where people live may change a little bit with House Bill two thousand and one, because there may be more infill. Infill is irregular. It may be slight densification of previously exclusively single-family zoned neighborhoods. As I've indicated earlier today, the intent for the code is that those new structures will replicate the built form of surrounding single-family homes. That's the intent there. So the impact on the infrastructure is what we plan for it to be, both in the transportation network and the water and sewer network, as well as the school. The schools, of course, monitor the demographic projections very closely. I just recently met, as an example, with the Hillsborough School District, just to talk about future schools in South Hillsborough, Wichita Village South. So that's a constant process. With regard to new housing areas, we had one person say, hey, let's think outside of the box. And he discussed, we've got lots of land and let's go elsewhere. In the state of Oregon, we have state land use planning program. And one of the foundational elements of that is the urban growth boundaries and urbanization and the delineation between urbanized areas and farm and forest and resource area preservation. So that's a decision that's a bit out of our control. So I just remind the commission and our community that's come tonight to partake in this that we have to plan inside the urban growth boundary. There are urban reserves into which the city can seek to expand, which we did. At the last opportunity, we expanded our urban growth boundary by one hundred and fifty acres of the Wichita Village South area, which will provide the opportunity for approximately a thousand new homes, which will include middle housing as required now by state law. So, you know, there's the opportunity for new housing areas to, again, alleviate some of the pressure as our community is projected to continue to grow. And so with regard to the role of our consultant, Angelo Planning Group, now urged with MIG, they have played a role to help us write code. And while it's not, it's not a separate report, they've just been an adjunct to us as staff writing code. And, you know, it's been a collaborative approach. We've needed the extra help, given that this has been, you know, a require, we have a timeline requirement. And so that's been the help that they've provided in it. So it's, it's been a collaborative effort. So with that, I think I've answered the questions that I was asked to answer. And Chris, I'll turn it back to you.
Thanks, Colin. So the regulations, we heard this in, in both public hearings about the optionality of the regulations and whether or not people will be required or if properties transact and are sold, if then the city comes in and will require middle housing. These rules, again, will be optional for property owners. These are, while they are state law changes that the city is required to implement in our code, that doesn't mean that they will be forced on property owners as a full requirement. Property owners will still have, when it comes to the middle housing legislation, they will still have the option to choose. And there's a variety of factors that will go into the feasibility of middle housing on specific lots. So just want to touch on that. Have heard loud and clear from those that testified this evening that the first notice that they received of the Housing Hillsborough project was the public notice that was sent out on March eighteenth. So that's a little under one month ago that that notice was sent out. We, you know, as staff, tried to get as creative as we possibly could, given the constraints of the pandemic and all of the impacts that that has had to in-person meetings and communication. So throughout the last two years, as was shown in the staff presentation, we used a variety of means to attempt to communicate this project. One nuanced item relative to citywide publication, every property owner in the city of Hillsborough receives a hard copy of City Views in their mailbox. This project was highlighted more than one time, I think for three times total at this point, that City Views had a description about the Housing Hillsborough project. And again, that is a citywide mailing that goes to every property in the city. So that's in addition to the public notice that was sent, in addition to the project website, social media posts, community virtual meetings, and the like.
Just can I just add, if I could, sorry to interrupt. The last City Views article, one of them was, you know, a full page, so these weren't small pieces, that it specifically invited our community members to our virtual community meetings. I just wanted to say that it was a, it was a specific invitation. Thanks.
The, so the community engagement, you know, like many other cities and like our entire organization throughout the pandemic, we've tried to, to approach a variety of different community engagement strategies to try to get the word out as broadly as possible, understanding that for some members of our community, that public notice that they received about three weeks ago was, was the first written correspondence that they had. So recognize that. But, you know, that, you know, there, there was more that staff did than that one public notice. Relative to language barriers, our organization, if, if any of the, the members of the public here did participate in the virtual community meetings, we did provide Spanish translation for those in a proactive manner. The public notice that went out to twenty-seven thousand plus property owners was sent both in English and Spanish. Any member of the public does have the ability to request translation services ahead of a public hearing. And that can be for a variety of languages, not just Spanish. So that opportunity is there. We did not receive that request ahead of time, or we would have definitely supported that request had it been received. So just want to make sure that that is, is clear. Public records and copies of the slides, recording of this new meeting will be posted on the project webpage. So that will be captioned on that project webpage for full transparency of the dialogue that happened this evening, the staff presentation that was made. So following the meeting tonight, we'll make sure that that gets up on the webpage for, for transparency of the discussions and actions and what was presented this evening. So now I'll turn it over to Leslie, who's going to get into some of the design feedback that we heard.
Thanks, Chris. I'm going to answer, give a response to three different items. The Orenco question, the property division question, and some vegetation and tree questions that came up. So first on the request that middle housing be allowed on a lot without division. There are opportunities for that. This is a question that has come up, I think, in both of our previous outreach efforts. And there are opportunities to add middle housing without dividing a property. One of that, one of those would be to add on to your existing dwelling. So an attached unit on to your existing unit, you know, creating a duplex. So that does not require a division. Another option would be cottage clusters. So in the provisions for cottage clusters, you can incorporate the existing dwelling onsite as part of that cottage cluster. And that doesn't require the division of, of property. So let me know if you have more questions along those lines. There's a question about this house in Orenco. We've had a number of questions pop up. We do not have a limit on number of bedrooms in a single, what we call now single-family dwelling, which would be, you know, after code changes, a single detached dwelling. At this point, there are no limits on bedrooms. So that structure is being built as a single-family home with an ADU. Bedrooms can be rented out for more than thirty days in any dwelling. If you rent out for less than thirty days, it's a short-term rental. There's different regulations for that. Regarding parking, the parking standards essentially aren't changing. One parking space is required per dwelling unit. And that will apply to, that applies to single detached dwellings now. It will apply to those in the future and as well middle housing as well. So if you have a duplex, one parking, off-street parking space is required per dwelling unit. That kind of goes to the point that, you know, you know, how many properties is going to change, what's going to happen to my neighborhood? Not all properties are going to be able to support additional dwelling units, depending on how they're configured and how they're currently developed as well. So can they support, you know, additional lot coverage? Can they support additional parking onsite? That might be a constraint on some properties. Regarding trees, a couple of questions on trees. So today, the tree code, the regulated trees do not apply to single detached lots. The only thing that apply, the only tree regulation that applies to single detached dwellings would be trees in the right of way. Those would need a permit. So what's following with these, with the code standards would be the same, applying the same non-application actually to middle housing as well. And that's part of the requirements of the state legislation is that whatever review single detached dwellings have, that has to be the same for middle housing as well. So you can't distinguish between them. If they're allowed in the zone, they're allowed under the same regulations as well. So trees on these lots can be removed. Specifically for the Inweba Esperanza site, that was a PUD approved in two thousand and one. There were about twenty-eight regulated trees that were going to come out that had to be documented in those decisions with, you know, what trees are coming out? Do they need to come out? It was identified that those twenty-eight trees were in the footprint of some of the structures or some of the required onsite improvements. The flip side of that is that they must be mitigated. So when you do have the tree regulations apply, there's at least a one-to-one mitigation requirement. And Inweba Esperanza, I think a hundred and seventy trees are being replanted. So on the bigger projects like that, different tree standards apply. And I think I think I hit the three. Look, I am available for questions if you have more to dig into on those.
Thanks, Leslie. Only point of clarification is Inweba Esperanza was approved in two thousand and twenty-one. So to wrap up, there was also a comment about the funding for shelters. So, you know, that, that is getting into a realm that these code amendments, you know, are not related to, or not getting into how their shelters are funded. There's a variety of, of ways in which shelters are There's a variety of, of ways in which shelters are funded, either publicly, privately, through nonprofits. So that is a very deep conversation to get into that, that is not directly tied to the regulations that are in front of the planning commission this evening. And the overall next step. So if there are residents, members of the public, they continue to have concerns, would like to understand the implications of these standards on their property. We do have a, an email address that we have asked for all comments and quote, written comments and questions to be submitted through. And that's middlehousing@hillsboro-oregon.gov. So again, middlehousing@hillsboro-oregon.gov. Anybody can also call the planning division's general number. We do have a staff member that is available on a daily basis to answer questions related to the Housing Hillsborough project. And that number is five oh three six eight one six one five three. So five oh three six eight one six one five three. So two ways that members of the public can reach out to staff to get additional questions answered or submit additional written comments. And President Bennett, that hopefully has captured all of the public testimony that was received. Oh, sorry. And one, one-third option, residents can also come to the counter here at the Civic Center if they have questions for staff.
Thank you, Chris. One question that maybe didn't get answered and was raised in several persons' testimony was the impact on infrastructure. You know, sewer, water, schools, transportation facilities, and how that's been taken into consideration in doing this. And I know that we've discussed that in our workshops, but I thought it might be helpful for those who testified to hear your response to that.
Yeah, I apologize, Commissioner Bennett. I thought I was covering that at a high level when I was responding to the population projection change, but, and, and that all the transportation systems and, and school systems were, you know, evaluated on our total population change. So the fact that some of the population, you know, so we don't see an increase in population total as a city occurring, but we see maybe different places in our community absorbing a increase. The projection is three percent increase in existing single-family neighborhoods over the twenty-year planning horizon based on the economics that we used at the time of an eco Eco Northwest study that we commissioned for the city to evaluate our infrastructure planning and, and we've shared that, of course, with all of our different infrastructure providers, both internally and externally. The county has done a similar program and we'll continue to monitor that, of course, because circumstances and economics may change. And so I can assure the commission that we'll continue to to follow that and evaluate it. I hope that helps.
It does. Thank you. All right. Commission, do you have questions, specific questions for staff that, that you would like to ask now that it's time for us to do that? I'm not seeing anything. Okay. Do I have a motion from the commission to close or continue the public hearing?
President Bennett, I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
I have a motion from Commissioner Grillo, seconded by Commissioner Air to close the public hearing. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Are there any extensions? Motion passes. The hearing is closed. Now is the time for the planning commission to hold its deliberations about this. Who would like to start tonight? Don't all jump in at once.
I'll go ahead, if that's okay.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Thrall Nash.
First of all, I'd like to acknowledge all the work that has gone into this, to get us to this evening. I came in on the tail end of the planning process for this. But I can, I've seen enormous amount of work done in those few months since I've become a commissioner. So thank you to the staff for all the work you're doing to implement this. And I'd also just like to acknowledge that change is really hard, just in general. And this is a lot of change. And I think, you know, we heard a lot of, we heard public testimony about people who were really concerned about the investment they've made in their housing and whether that's going to, not, that's going to be affected by this. And I'd like to just acknowledge those concerns. I think this is one of the challenges that comes with living in a really high-cost area, that when people do manage to get into the housing, housing market, anything that feels like it's going to change that or destabilize, that feels really, really sort of concerning and scary. And I just want to acknowledge that. I also want to say that I'm wholly in support of the legislation itself from the state. I think it's really important, living in a place where we have a lot of economic growth, we have a lot of people who want to live here, that we make sure that we create as much choice and as much opportunity for people to enter the housing market as, as we can. And I think that, that, that this helps do that. I don't know how much it's going to do. I mean, Mr. Cooper said that, you know, projections are that we're going to see like maybe three percent increase in middle housing. That's not a lot. But it is something, and the three percent of middle housing may help people become homeowners that couldn't have been homeowners if this change hadn't been made. And I think that's really important. There was a couple of people that asked, you know, why do we need to do this? And I think I think Mr. Cooper mentioned the projection of our population growth. And I believe Mr. Cooper is going to give this planning commission a work session tomorrow on the outline for economic growth and whether or not we have in our land use decisions based on that economic growth tomorrow. I believe that's open to the public in terms of you being able to watch us get that information. So if anybody's really interested in, you know, economic growth projections and why we need to be so urgent about building housing, that might be a really good thing to watch if anybody that's watching now has the opportunity to do that tomorrow night. And I also want to sort of address the whole the concern about the state saying that the city must, you know, must do this, which they must, and we don't have an option not. But the city being required to allow this kind of housing to exist doesn't mean that any individual property owner has to, has to put middle housing on their lot, right? So if it's true that your neighborhood has ninety percent or ninety-five percent of the people who want it to look the way it has always looked, then it's probably true that it's going to look the way it always has looked. Because those people who own those houses that want it to stay the same aren't going to choose to subdivide their lots and aren't going to choose to put middle housing up on it. But it's important that if there are some people who want that, want that to happen, maybe because they want to house other family members who can't get into the housing market, and they want to use their own property to make sure their families have, have housing in the future. Or maybe because they want the revenue from it for their own retirement or whatever, that they're allowed to be able to do that. And also give people a, a chance to enter the housing market. So in conclusion, I think this is going to be good for Hillsborough. I know change is really hard, and I know people are concerned about what's going to happen to their investments they made in their own housing. But I think it's been really positive in general for the community.
Thank you, Commissioner Thrall Nash. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else want to chime in?
I share a similar sentiment. And, you know, my brief time on the Planning Commission, you know, we have to make decisions based on the information presented to us and facts. And while I think we all sympathize with what we heard in the public testimony tonight, I didn't hear anything that was necessarily, you know, a direct challenge to approving this forward. So for those reasons, I think like, like Commissioner Thrall Nash said, I share the same sentiment and I would have to be in favor of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Schiller. Anyone else?
President Bennett?
Commissioner Grillo?
Yes. For those that participated, I want everybody to, if they can, remember that the planning commissioners are residents of this community. We share a lot of the thoughts and same concerns that, that people that come and participate. I think we're very sensitive about how people feel. Let me just say, these type of hearings on this type of subjects, there's, there's so many cross-currents. Civics is difficult, ladies and gentlemen, and there's no way to get around it. You have to participate, even if you have a busy life. That's the environment that, that we live in. I think there's a little bit of confusion amongst people that the city of Hillsborough is out perhaps on an island by itself, and we can do whatever we want. In fact, we are part of the Portland metropolitan area. I think Plan Director Cooper has done an excellent job of explaining that. I think if people are unhappy with the direction of certain things, it certainly hasn't been for a lack of the city participating, trying to push back, trying to explain the nuances at the local level. I think Plan Director Cooper expressed that. He is on our side. The staff is on our side without question. But the state, right, wrong, or different, has chosen over the last, I don't know, Colin, ten years, has taken an ever-increasing role in doing local planning. That's all part of the governance. And if people are unhappy with that, you have to start participating. This gets back to governance at the state level. You got to know who your legislators are. And you have to start telling them what you like and you don't like. The planning commission is really the last stop, if you will, before a city council has to bite the bullet, if you will, in order to show compliance with state law. People may not like that, and we, we, we saw that tonight. There's stuff about referendum. I, I hate to explain this to people, but as much as everybody thinks we are a democracy, we are a republic. We have people represent us. That's why we elect the local officials. That's why we elect state officials. That's why we elect so many different people, and we hope that they do the right thing. I, I just don't think a referendum is going to be a viable, I don't think it would do anything in this particular case. I want to take this time to express to people, I've already said the staff works really hard. This is the City of Hillsborough staff. They do a damn good job, if I can use that word. They have been a fierce defender of the city all the way through this process. And I think President Bennett and I, and I think one other commissioner have gone all the way back to the very beginning on this issue. They have had the best interests of this community at heart. I take a little bit of umbrage when somebody makes the public comment that the staff hasn't done enough, hasn't done the right thing. What has not been expressed tonight as kind of the dot at the end of this whole process is, is that in addition to the mandate that the city got, there's a dot at the end. And Mr. Cooper, what is the date in which compliance has to occur? Is it June?
June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
June thirtieth, ladies and gentlemen. And this is not the only thing that the staff's working on. This is not the only thing that the community is working on to handle varying degrees of, of requests through your local government. So I'm going to stand here very proudly and tell you that the staff's done a damn good job, ladies and gentlemen. You can argue that they didn't cross every T and dot every I. But we also have a process that's ongoing. And if we see something down the road that needs some fine tuning, I am positive that the planning commission and the, the staff will figure out how to do that fine tuning. I appreciate people coming out. But governance and civics is hard, quite frankly, and there's no way to get around it. I, to kind of play off of what Mr. Chris Berry said, he gave us, us, the citizens, a lot of options about how to come in, understand the impacts of this proposal on your property. I would encourage people to take Mr. Berry up on his comments, quite frankly. I have always found staff to be very receptive. And whether that's doing that by email or making an appointment. This has been a tough one for everybody. I think the planning commissions individually, we've had a lot of discussion through a lot of work sessions. We haven't always agreed with each other on everything. But we do try to come together at the end. And President Bennett, for all of those reasons and more, I intend to support this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Grillo. Anyone else want to speak before I do? All right. Well, the first thing I'm going to say is that there will be impacts to Hillsborough's neighborhood, neighborhoods because of middle housing. There'll be greater density. There'll be more people, which means more people, which means more cars, which means more kids. And those impacts will exist just like they did with the new development that happened ten years ago. As they did with the new development that happened ten years before that. As they did with the new development that happened ten years before that. I've been practicing, I was practicing, I am retired, practiced real estate and land use law from before the time I was actually licensed. I wasn't practicing law before I was licensed, but I was working as a law clerk in a law firm that did only land use work back in nineteen seventy-seven. And a lot of the comments we heard tonight, I heard back in nineteen seventy-seven, nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen eighty-five, nineteen ninety. People are truly and genuinely concerned about their neighborhoods, the places that they live. And thanks for that. That's, that's what makes our communities special. People care about them. At the same time, when the communities become special, it draws other people. And inevitably, it draws a demand for more development. And when it draws demand for more development, it creates impacts that we all have to kind of learn to live with, whether we like it or not. But I don't think because of middle housing, your neighborhoods are going to change quite as much as you might think. I live in the Jackson School neighborhood, and I remember when I moved here, I thought, you know, this is a nice, quiet neighborhood, all single-family dwellings, blah, blah, blah. And I started to walk my dog. And lo and behold, you walk through Jackson School neighborhood, and there are duplexes and triplexes in here that probably ninety-five percent of the people who even live here don't know exist. They fit into the neighborhood. And as I believe that middle housing will fit into neighborhoods, and partly it'll fit into neighborhoods is because of the clear and objective standards that our staff has worked so hard to include in these code amendments in order to take those impacts into consideration and try to minimize them as much as possible. There are also going to be some positives. There are also going to be some positives to what happens with with middle housing. As Commissioner Thrall Nash observed, there's going to be greater housing choice for people who live in our community. Those choices are going to present housing that's more affordable for a certain sector of our population that presently can't afford to to buy their own house. There will be opportunities for people to have their house and to have another unit on their property that can generate income, which they can use to justify buying that house. There'll be a much better and wiser use of the limited land resource that we have through infill, which is essentially what middle housing is. And it will create better diversity and more diversity in our neighborhoods, which which you know, in the end, I personally believe makes a community even stronger. The the legislature has spoken here about middle housing and they've been very particular about it. The written administrative rules are very rigorous. And as as I commented earlier, if the city doesn't implement these amendments by June thirtieth, then the state statute and those administrative rules will go into effect here. So one way or another, this train has left the station and it's on its way to our community. And this is our opportunity to mold those regulations as much as we're allowed by the law to have the best, most positive impact on our neighborhood possible. And you know, we have a duty to follow the law. One of the things that public officials need to understand is that we need to respect the laws that are there and we have a duty to implement them. And I take that duty very seriously. Having said all that, during the process of staff presentation of of these matters to the planning commission, they've been impressed a little bit about what happens if there's kind of unforeseen negative consequences here, things that as I use the word unforeseen, that we didn't see. And I believe the city is truly committed to monitoring the impact of these these new regulations on a going forward basis. And to the extent that the influences are are highly negative to the community, I think those those influences will be brought to the attention of our legislators. All in the effort to make our community a better place to live. So having said all that, I'm in concert with my fellow commissioners with regard to what's before us tonight. I think it's a very positive thing. I think we can, if it's embraced, it can be found to be a very positive thing for our community. And I'm hopeful that ten or fifteen years down the road, people will say, isn't our community better because we have more housing choices, because we have more people who can afford to get into a house, because we have more interesting neighborhoods and neighbors. I think those are all positive things for our community. And and that's what I really choose to focus on here with regard to the position we're in. Yes, we're being told in essence by the legislature what we need to do. But I think, you know, you need, you need to take that and say, okay, let's make it a really positive thing in our community. And I think if we approve these changes tonight and send this on to the city council, that will be a huge first step in accomplishing that goal. I too want to thank the staff for the yeoman's duty that they've done the last two or three years since House Bill two thousand one was adopted in not the best of circumstances with pandemic. I think they've done an excellent job. We lost one of our key staff people. I don't remember, six, nine months ago, something like that, maybe ten months ago, Laura Kelly, who did an outstanding job for us. And even though she's not here, I certainly would thank her for the excellent work she did. But the staff, I don't question whatsoever the staff's commitment to this community. And I think that should be applauded for the work they've done under difficult circumstances. So having said all of that, I'll be supportive of any motion to approve what's been brought for us tonight. Any further comments?
I would just like to reiterate that any decision taken by the council tonight is, should not be reflected on the only tonight's presentation, because we in the planning commission have been seeing this material over and over again at different workshops and different meetings. And we we have inquired along the same lines as the public has. So I would just like to reiterate that this is not the first time we're seeing this material. Our judgment is not based on today itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Air. Anyone else have comments? Then I would entertain a motion.
That we approve this?
Ms. Nash, please.
Approve, sending this on to the city council.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Thrall Nash, seconded by Commissioner Air to approve Community Development Code Amendment zero zero one dash twenty two, Housing Hillsborough. Based on the staff reports and the records that's been made at the city and the testimony that we've heard tonight. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those who are, all those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Does anyone wish to abstain? The motion passes. Returning to our agenda that we have no unfinished business tonight, do any commissioners have communications or reports for discussion? Seeing none. Staff, anything outside of these matters to report on?
Thank you very much, President Bennett, members of the commission, Colin Cooper, planning director for the record. No, sir, we have nothing else this evening, just a quick, other than a quick reminder that we do have a regular meeting tomorrow for just a work session on the analytic opportunities analysis and update. And that's all we have.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner, or Commissioner Cooper. I just demoted you. If there's no further business before the planning commission at this special meeting, we are hereby adjourned. We'll see everyone again tomorrow night at six o'clock. Thank you very much.
Good everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.